Good afternoon, and want to welcome everybody to the regular scheduled meeting with the Board of County Commissioners for September 11th, 2018. One thing I would like to mention this time, I think everybody probably figures out what today is. Seventeenth anniversary of the terrorist attacks back in 2001, nine eleven. I'd ask everybody to keep in mind the victims and their survivors as we go through the rest of this day. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Jason Sheeler with the Hope Lutheran Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we'll have the pledge right after.
Hey Father, we begin this meeting in the presence of you and invite your presence here. As our county seal says of conservation, that word is a great reminder that we have been entrusted with such treasures and gifts of your own creation, this earth and the greatest treasure of people. Nine eleven is that reminder of how precious life is and how much we really don't know and how much we really are not in control of things. And so we are dependent, Lord, upon your presence, your protection, your mercy, and your wisdom and guidance. I pray you will lead this meeting, that we would be mindful of you and what you entrusted us, and that you would guide our thoughts, our actions, that we would not politicize morality or make politics moral either. That we understand the balance in which you have entrusted to us, and so guide our discussions, and that it would be winsome and be beneficial for your people. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Let's see here, anybody see any elected officials out there? I don't. Is this mic on? Can you hear me out there? Okay. All right. I don't see any. Call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is consider any additions or deletions. Mr. Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two additions for the board's consideration. The first is under the consent agenda, and that is a request to approve the minutes of the August 30th land use hearing. And under administration, a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign construction contract number 018038 with the Walton County Health Department painting project with edge printing.
Motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, at this point in time, it's opened up for public comment. Ask anybody who wants to make a public comment concerning any agenda item. It's restricted to the agenda items right now. Is there any public comment? Seeing? No. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I'd like to remove number eight. The Taxpayers Association has some questions that I'm not able to answer.
Okay. I think based on our board policy, that's, it doesn't require a vote. Just any commissioner can remove an item for discussion?
Yes, sir, and what I would suggest is that we go ahead and approve the consent agenda with item number eight removed, and then we'll handle number eight after we vote on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, item number eight is for further discussion. Commissioner Depper, what is it that you want to discuss about that?
The Taxpayers Association's asked questions of me, and I'm not, I don't feel comfortable asking, answering the questions, so I'd like you to speak if you'd like to.
No, I think you have to ask questions, because you pulled it.
Okay, I guess the one of the questions is the reason for you still going to the meeting since you did not win the election.
Okay, the best I remember, I'm commissioner until November the fourteenth. This meeting is not about beach restoration, it's about customary use. Actually, the lady that sponsored the bill is going to be there, and I would like to look her straight in the eyes and tell her what chaos and what havoc she's caused in Walden County, that we have neighbors fighting with neighbors, and that we really don't appreciate someone from South Florida meddling in Walden County business. I'd need, I would like to tell her that. I would also like to tell the other people there that they need to join our fight, that if we lose in Walden County on the customary use ordinance, that we will, it will affect them, and they need to join us now. So that's the reason I'm going.
Okay. Any public comment? Bob? Ms. Bowman, hang on, I'll call Bob, you'll be next.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson. I'm the director of the Walton County Taxpayers Association. The board has asked me to speak today on this issue. First of all, we have no problem with Walton County sending people to this conference. We believe very strongly in our people participating in state government, being with our neighbors and people of black interest. Our issue is the fact that one of the people that's on the list to go will have about six weeks to effect something in Walton County before she goes out of office. I wonder, is this something that the TDC should be doing rather than the BCC? Are they going as representatives of the Tourist Development Council? I understand what Commissioner has said, what she wants to do, but I believe that's been expressed by every newspaper in the state of Florida and every blog and everything that's there. So, is the TDC sending somebody? Or are these two people going as representatives of the TDC?
These two, as I understand it, Bob, the two that has to go down there are representing the BCC. Whether the TDA or anyone else, or TDC is sending anybody, I'm not aware of.
Is Mr. Tusa present? Could he answer that question?
There's your response. He said he's not, they're not.
They're not. It's not a lot of money, and I understand that. I just believe that the people that go to conferences of this nature, if we had received a resignation from an employee and it was going to be forty-five days or sixty days in advance, would we expend county dollars, or would we select another employee or another commissioner to go in their place? So, I just don't see the value in sending someone who is term limited and term is fixing to expire, and we don't.
Yeah.
And we think it's a bad expenditure.
I would like to say something. You know, since I was the one that stopped the chains and fences to start with, and I've led this customary use fight, I think I still have some unfinished business down there. I want to look that lady in the eyes that started this. And we definitely have not made a decision on customary use. We have one more public, we have one more planned hearing. So this will be an issue that is solved before I leave office. And again, I want to lobby, the real estate people have asked me to lobby to try to encourage more citizens, more counties to join in our fight, so that's my purpose of going.
I understand your reasons that you state are going. I just don't believe and the taxpayers don't see it's a valid expenditure of our dollar.
You know what, I had lunch with one of your, with your taxpayer people today. He didn't know a thing about this. So is this a board decision, or is this a Bob Hudson decision?
No ma'am, it's a board decision.
Okay, well maybe he was not at the board meeting.
I don't know who you had lunch with, talked to, or whatever, but.
All right, thank you, Bob. Time's up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also am leaving office. I had chosen to do so, but I am the commissioner sitting in this seat until November the eighteenth. I don't know why I got four more days than you, but my certificate says November the eighteenth.
I'm sorry.
I am the county commissioner right now. And if I chose to, I need to go to consortium meeting, which is another, it's an FAC meeting. I need to go represent Walton County. Because of my present health situation, I've chosen not to go. But if I wanted to, I have the right to go to that meeting. First of all, to represent Walton County. And second, I am in office until November the eighteenth. Now, whether or not, that's to me is her decision. She's a seated county commissioner until these other people take office, I think the third weekend of November. So, whether or not you agree with her going, to me, she has that right, just like I would have the right if I chose to do so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowman, you have something to say?
Yes, you said something about the state created this problem. That's not true. You created this problem when you put garbage cans where they didn't belong in the first place. You said you were going to offer a service. See, you want to twist this around and have it both ways. You want to be able to recognize the beaches as private property so that you can later own them and keep them all to yourself.
Corey, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're not talking about the customary use issue. We're talking about.
Whether she can use taxpayer money to go down south to talk about other counties joining in your corruption. Okay, well, I just wanted to say that you created this problem by putting garbage cans where they don't belong in the first place, because according to the Environmental Protection Agency, you're not supposed to be driving or stepping or walking within fifteen feet of the vegetation line. And that's exactly where the garbage cans are.
Ms. Bowman, you're getting off sidetrack there.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Bob, come on.
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I fully appreciate the commissioner's right to decide whether they want to ask the other commissioners to approve payment for their travel to a conference or other type of event that has some relation to their duties as county commissioners. However, as taxpayer, I question whether going down there to look someone in the eye and be vindictive about their passage of, or involvement in passage of legislation at the state level is a good use of the taxpayers' fundings. It's okay to say I have the right, but does it make sense to spend the taxpayers' money on something like that? Thank you.
Mr. Brook, I have never been vindictive, vindictive. I will go there with a smile on my face and be professional, just like I am with you right now.
Call a question, Mr. Chairman. Question's being called. I don't think we've got a motion yet, and a second. Need a motion and a second.
I make a motion, approve this.
My second motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 I did not vote, because I don't want any, any ethics things passed on me. I just got clear some. I don't need any more bogus ethics remarks.
Okay, the motion passed for one. Okay, then let's get back on track then. We've approved the consent agenda. Next up is Waste Management, D A L.
Motion to approve the.
Second.
Motion and a second, and I will abstain from the vote due to my conflict of interest. I filed the proper paperwork with the clerk. We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, Mr. Jones is not with us tonight. Unfortunately, he lost a grandson, a baby, yesterday, so he will not be here tonight. So, Mr. Sunday will step in his place and take it up. Mr. Bowers, I think number twenty-seven is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item under administration is Mr. Walter Bowers from the Florida Forest Service, and he has his annual presentation for the commissioners.
Hey Walt.
Y'all doing all right?
Goodbye. Just take your name for the record over here.
Walter Bowers, B R W E R S. Y'all been through this before. It's the annual commissioners report. We come report to y'all what's been going on inside the county with the Florida Forest Service, through our fire and through our timber management program and land management. Kind of started off dry this year and was pretty busy for a while, but things slowed down quite a bit whenever we received rainfall in late spring. Did have an opportunity to send out some employees out west, and had an active season out west with folks going out there and pretty much transitioned into hurricanes at the point we're at right now. But if any, I don't particularly want to go, I know y'all have all on your agenda, I particularly don't want to go through a line item by line item, but if anyone has a question about anything, or by all means, please feel free to ask.
Okay, any commissioners having questions for Walt? Seeing none, you got anything else?
Pleasure seeing y'all. Make me know how to get to you. Yes, sir.
All right, number twenty-eight.
Thank you, commissioners. The next two items are in reference to the same issue. First of those two is a request to award the invitation to bid 018038. That's the Walton County Health Department painting project, the Phoenix Springs main facility to edge printing. If you recall, we put this invitation to bid out for the Health Department. We, in response to that invitation to bid, we received one bid, and we're asking you today and recommending that you award that invitation to bid.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is the contract in relation to that bid, and it's a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign construction contract 018038, Walton County Health Department painting project with edge printing in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
What's the board's wishes?
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chairman to sign construction contract number 018036, and that's the records retention building with Berkshire Johnstone LLC. Just a little history on this. Earlier this year, we, you authorized us to go out for bid. For that facility, we received no bids. We brought it back to you with a request to do some more work and put it out for bid. We did so. We've received two bids back in response to that invitation. And today, we are asking that you approve the award of the low, the most responsive responsible bidder, which is Berkshire Johnstone. One point of clarity there is that there was a base bid and an alternate base bid on this was, excuse me.
It was three forty-one, four hundred.
Three forty-one, four, and the alternate was for a sprinkler system. It was eighteen thousand two hundred. We think that that would be a wise expenditure, and so the total is three fifty-nine, six, and we're requesting that you approve that today.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Comment, my concern on this fire suppression system, is this a water, is it halon, is it dry chemical? Do we know yet?
I think it's a dry chemical.
Yeah, we sure don't want to wet all them records, so, okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. We got any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number thirty is a request for approval for County Public Works to assist with preparation for construction of some affordable housing as requested by Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity, as you know, is embarking on initiative for affordable housing. They have an area out in Mossy Head area called Hope Village, and they have requested some assistance from the county to clear and remove debris from those lots so that they may proceed with construction. And so we're just looking for some direction from the board on the expenditure of these resources in this particular instance, and request in the future.
Okay, Stan, do you have any idea if this request is for one house site or multiple house sites?
I believe it is for two.
Okay.
Do we have a, well, I guess we need a motion.
I do know the village has, the plat has fourteen homes. This is a, is anyone from Public Works here?
They are.
That knows about.
Okay, let's back up a minute. Let's get a motion and a second on the floor so we can discuss this. So, is there a motion?
Second. For discussion.
Okay. All right, very well. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
For discussion.
Yeah, for, this is for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, while they're coming up, I think it's an absolutely worthwhile idea. My question to you, how do we tell other people, no, we're not going to clear your lot?
I have the same issues.
That's my only question.
And I would like to know on approximate cost.
Because they're five oh one C three, or?
Okay. All right, let's.
But if another.
We've got too much talking going on behind me. I can't keep up with what you're saying. Sarah, you got the floor.
Okay.
And then Tony, you got it.
And I asked, was it because they're five oh ones, are they a non-profit? DeeDee said they were. But then, do we treat other nonprofits the same way? Is my, if we're gonna be, we're gonna, you know, do it for one, we're gonna have to be willing to do it for another entity to do it as well. Don't have a problem with it, just won't, I want to throw that out.
Okay, Tony.
Do we have a cost estimate?
No, so we don't. Wilmer Stafford, Pellet Works, SKA F F O R D. No, so we're not really tagged a cost estimate to it yet.
How much does it usually cost to clear a lot?
They probably got a half a day's work, what they got now. You need an excavator and probably two dump trucks.
Wilmer, is the current request for two lots, or what's the current request?
It's just the two lots, yes, sir, that's cleared and knocked down. They already got it knocked down. It just needs picking up and hauling out.
Just haul it out.
Yes.
So would you come back later and ask for additional lots in this, you said something about fourteen?
The plat that I have seen has fourteen home sites, and I think a couple have already been cleared, and it's been on a volunteer basis, and Bill Renneke would probably know better, but it's, some of the ideas, five or six trees, I can't even remember.
There is, there's a few big pines down, and they want some of the stumps removed. And Mr. Sunday, I mean, I mean, I think it made him four lots. I think he had one, he's building on one of them, and there may be three other lots there.
Is Mr. Renneke here today? I take that you, come on, come forward, please. You have questions for him, or you've heard what was stated?
Yes, sir. We're, the attempt there is to develop those fourteen lots for affordable housing. And we can knock the trees down, and we can take the limbs and things. There's some big trunks and things we just don't have any way of moving, and that's really what, in this instance, we are asking for. The trees that are laying down essentially come from one lot and a little bit from a lot next door. And that's all we're going to do this year. We can only afford to do one house, but eventually we'll do fourteen houses on that, on that site.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, it's William Renneke, R E N N I C K E.
Thank you.
And I'm the volunteer construction chairman for the Habitat.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we assist them in this particular instance to remove the trees from this lot, or, you know, but in the future, I think they need to come back to us and give us some kind of plan if they want us to continue to help them, how many they're going to do, and how, you know, but in this particular, I will make the motion to help.
I'll second, but you will need to come back, because it really is one home a year, is basically what.
It's one home this year because we're doing two homes that are not on that site in Dufunia for two other families, but probably it will never be more than two, and it's, it's going to go on for seven or eight years.
And there's been some other volunteer work on the parcels anyway?
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, the way the trees have all been knocked down, the lot was cleared by a gentleman with an excavator who came in and took the trees down. He just had no way of removing the trees.
Okay, so your motion, Ms. Sarah, is to assist them here to remove the existing fell trees and the stump removal for that lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You agree with that?
I second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Mr. Brook.
Bob Brook, B R O O K E. While I think Habitat for Humanity is a very worthwhile charitable organization, and applaud their works, I think it sets a dangerous precedent for the commissioners to, okay, to do work for them without having any knowledge of what the cost involved would be. I would recommend you get your people to estimate what the cost is and then approve it after you have that information. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would like to respond. I tend to agree if we could wait a, you know, I think we need some type of estimate, and Wilmer may can give us that, but I just, I hate to just approve something when I have some type of idea of how much it's going to cost.
So, right now, Wilmer's, Wilmer, a half day's work. Okay, is there some type of cost estimate so we can move forward?
We could do it for less than five hundred. Two trucks and an excavator. Yes, there's not that much really on the ground.
All right, well, with that in mind, maybe we are to, or I'll ask that you withdraw the motion and then maybe look at additional motions that this be, till the next meeting, you allow Public Works to bring back an estimated cost estimate.
I will amend my motion.
I'll second, I'll amend myself.
And that's, all right. So.
The meeting in Dufunia you will have.
To have a cost estimate for this. Okay, thank you. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion. Aye, pose, motion carries. Wilmer, you have a question?
Just, you talking about the whole fourteen lots, or just what they got?
Just one in question.
Okay.
Just that one, not all fourteen. Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is a request to advertise and hold a public hearing on September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, at nine AM or soon thereafter at the Dufunia Springs Courthouse to bring forward ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars from landfill reserves for the design and permitting of the Class III landfill expansion.
Motion to approve, second.
The motion is second. All in favor? Hang on, may I have any public comment?
This is also the day we've got the budget hearing, correct? The same time we've got the, is this?
That's the day before.
I'm sorry.
Day before.
Sorry, twenty-four.
All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Mr. Tusa.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Commissioner's Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. One item of business tonight. I stood up here before Mr. Tusa, because I'll go ahead and take care of this business. He'll have some updates for you. Item of business is a request for approval to make some improvements to Grayton Beach State Park in exchange for an easement to help facilitate our construction of the multi-use path in that area. So, the improvements to the park include a new restroom building at the trailhead that is in close proximity to the main entrance to their park. This restroom facility would be about three hundred square feet, the two fixture, basically two unisex bathrooms and a small covered area. The second improvement originally was going to be a paved parking area. In between the TDC meeting and this meeting, some discussions ensued where instead of paving the whole parking lot, the parking lot, the majority of it would remain gravel. We would pave an apron from the road into the parking lot and pave the handicap parking lots or parking areas, parking spaces, and a sidewalk connecting to them. Then the third improvement would be a crosswalk from the main entrance over to our new multi-use path, which would be on the north side of the road. In exchange for that, they'll grant us an easement on the north or the southwest corner of their, that area of the park that we need for drainage and grading for the multi-use path that is going to be realigned on the north side of the road in that area of thirty-eight. The path will straddle the boundary line between the right-of-way and the park for approximately, well, from the intersection of two eighty-three and thirty-eight headed east to about where Miller's Lane is, just on the east side of the Western Lake arm there. Reason for this, like I say, is for drainage and grading and to get the path in behind the, there's a series of electric power poles in that area, and in order to get the path in, we would have had to relocate those poles at a cost of about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Our preliminary estimates on these new improvements and the new revised improvements is between a hundred and ten and a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We have Mr. Popple with the state park system here to answer any questions you may have about the state parks, acceptance of this, or desire for this. And I believe Chance Powell with our engineering department is in the audience as well. The Public Works Department has actually project managed this portion of the path. TDC is funding it, and we do have some oversight in it.
Okay. It's Mr. Poplin. Come forward, please. Here. If you will, just identify yourself with the clerk, and then we may have some questions for you.
Certainly. My name is Warren Poplin. I'm bureau chief for District One State Parks. That's from Tallahassee to Pensacola.
Okay. I assume you've been well versed on all this and been kept in the loop?
Absolutely.
And has the state park approved of these plans?
We do. Actually, it's been a discussion that we've had with the TDC folks. They came to us with their desire for, the need for the easement, and this was, really, we look at it as a partnership opportunity to enhance the visitor's experience, so we are always looking for how we can improve our visitor's experience.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, board.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Is there any, we need a motion and a second to move forward with discussion, or we can have one for discussion.
I have a motion to discuss.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any public comment? I see a hand back there. Celeste?
My comment is that this is another example of Walton County's lack of planning, having to use conservation land to fix problems they created. And, you know, if you look at that parking on the north side, that was put in a number of years ago in a hurry, and if I remember correctly, it was put in because of the beach nourishment project needed so many parking spaces to get the federal money. So, they said, well, let's just hurry up and put parking spaces wherever we can. So, rather than have a long-term plan, that was done. And then another issue I have with what you're doing is, and it just happened at Watercolor. There's a perfectly good bike path on the south side that hasn't been there that long that now is going to be dug up. So, it's like, the lack of this long-term planning continues to create the counties using conservation land. And another thing is, I think this crosswalk at the entrance of the park is going to be a problem. You know, the county has not always made cross areas in the best decisions, and I think there, you know, you're gonna have big RVs pulling in and out, then you're gonna have people trying to cross on their bikes or with their families, walking, and I think it's just really gonna create a really bad problem. And I know that there's a person that lives at Old Miller Place that is always having problems now, even before the crosswalk, with the traffic there at the entrance. So, I think you're creating a problem that does not exist. And, yeah, that, and I, again, I've mentioned this before when this topic came up, we need to think long-term here, and the county needs to look at burying its power lines. The only reason they're having to use this, get that little half acre easement, is because the power lines are in the way. If that, if the parking would have been planned correctly, that wouldn't have been an issue. But now, Walton County really needs to seriously look at burying its power lines, and they said, well, it's just too expensive. Well, you know what? Use some of the BP money. And I see Watercolor, Seaside, and some of the other large communities, they're private, they have buried the power lines. And so, I think, I would just suggest that you do some more long-term planning instead of just patchwork planning as you go along, and then you maybe won't have to continuously look at the conservation lands for your needs.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Bowman?
Coy Bowman, B O W M A N. Y'all are just hooked on trees, and you're doing them a line at a time. Okay, so, this is just an excuse to get more trees for free and not pay the taxes on them. You're talking about putting the multi-use path on both sides of thirty-eight. That's what you're talking about here, right? That can't happen, because if you cut down that many more trees and you put that much more non-absorption ground along the road that's already not absorbing anything, along the path that's already not absorbing anything, then all of the ground underneath the road is just gonna wash away. Okay, but, like, I kind of think that's what you want to do, which is why those giant monstrosity houses were built in thirty-eight. I think you want to break thirty-eight so that you have an excuse to run a road behind all of the neighborhoods, eating all those trees back there in the forest. So, anyways, y'all are like addicts that won't stop.
Anyone else?
Chairman, may I ask Chance Powell to come in to talk about his multi-use? Chance, would you please refresh us? Because we have a multi-use, long-term plan that we've started.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Can you just, just, we have started something, we?
We have started a master plan. I will say that most, most of that plan identifies locations where we currently don't have multi-use trails or pedestrian facilities where we wish to have them. It doesn't necessar, I think what Ms. Celeste has referenced is a typical section of thirty-eight and what that will look like long-term. We're working on two projects right now that we hope to bring to the board in the near future. These are from three ninety-five, basically over to Lakewood Drive. We're looking at two typical sections right now that we're playing with, trying to understand how we can construct these, how we can move and maintain traffic and pedestrian traffic while we get these done. And, you know, it'd be something that we'd want the board's input in, on, in the public's input on in the future. But we're trying to develop something, you know, we also have several, the mobility study that was done on thirty-eight, several other transportation projects and studies that are being done. All those are coming together to help develop some type of a typical section for thirty-eight and what that'll look like. And it'll all be different on thirty-eight. We'll have some, some rule sections of thirty-eight, and we'll have some urban sections of thirty-eight. So, those are being done. The plan that she's talk, that you're talking about is sort of broad-scale overall for all of South Walton, but something is coming for thirty-eight to tweak the typical section of it.
And how does this multi-use path, along with the crosswalk for Grayton, fit into all that as far as its viability for the future? Should they?
Well, you know, this is not something that was done very quickly, I don't, I don't believe. That path was, has been being planned through that section there for several years. I know at least four or five years. And that would most likely be a rule-type section from two eighty-three over to Watercolor. Right now, the plan and what we're implementing through that section, you know, we already have the pedestrian pass, pedestrian bridges on the north side of the Western Lake Bridges. The path will remain on the north side from Watercolor all the way to two eighty-three. We will keep the path on the south side from the entrance to Grayton Beach State Park west to two eighty-three. The only place that the path will be removed is from the entrance to Grayton Beach State Park east to Watercolor. That, the existing R R F B, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon that we have for the crossing just west of the Western Lake Bridges will be relocated to the entrance to the Grayton Beach State Park. That was a request by DEP, and, you know, that's, that's the plan for this part of the project.
Chance, is this a, was this planned as a safety issue because of the narrow bike, bike path crossing the bridge?
It, it was, and also, we made a decision, or the decision was made, I wasn't really a part of it, but when that path was placed on the north side of the Western Lake Bridges, we decided it'd be best to carry that all the way to the stop-controlled intersection at two eighty-three.
They made the telephone calls, Liam.
Ms. Bowman?
Okay. And what it also did is, is remove that bicycle traffic from the Miller's Place exit, also Barago's Restaurant, and all the other businesses in that, in that area. Now, the path will remain over there, but the, but the brunt of the traffic can be handled on the, on the north side of the road where there are little to no driveway connections and opportunities for conflict.
Any other question?
Thank you.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion, I can, a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Number thirty-three, Jay, I believe you got that.
Yeah, I just have a few updates I'd like to provide to the board. Good afternoon. You know, the season is now over, and the TDC has begun the process of soliciting public input into beach activities for our ordinances for next year. And so, just wanted to give the board an update on the meetings that we have planned that are coming up in the next few weeks. We actually had one today. Our beach management committee met here today at the Annex. Our destination improvement committee meeting will be meeting Thursday here at the Annex at one o'clock. Then on Thursday, September twentieth, we'll have a beach vendor meeting at ten AM here at the Annex. And then on Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, at five PM, we'll be having a public workshop as well to discuss beach activities and ordinances. So, we always invite the public to come and participate in our meetings. The more input that we get, the more that you can make an informed decision on how we move things forward for Walton County. Wanted to give a quick update on TDT numbers for July. We had a little over a four percent increase in our numbers for a total of five million, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and two hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. And then, year over year, we are up eight point four nine percent for a total of twenty-one million, fifty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. So, we are having a good year, to say the least. So, anyway, if there are any questions, that is it for me.
Any question?
I would like to address one issue that he's brought up. I was gonna kind of wait till, you know, I was going completely out the door, but now, with the meetings that are going to be held, I have asked for a number of years now, and I will continue to act to the task, that we have to, or state, we have to get a handle on vendors. I think part of the reason we're in customary use battle right now is because of the lack of control of vendors and too many vendors. I suggested for quite some time that we're each access. We bid, and you get this one, and you have to maintain it, you have to have a person there just standing every day, and you're responsible for that. Is he gonna cut out some people from doing business? Yes, it is not my responsibility, it's the responsibility of this board to make sure that everybody has a business. It is our responsibility to make sure we have safety and harmony and that we protect the God-given rights, and that beach is one that he gave to us.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, because I'm going out the door, maybe I'll have a good chance to vote on it, and you know where I stand. We can no longer, I hear the people that they're being run off from the, from our public beaches onto the private beaches a lot of times by vendors. If we can get a handle on that, I do believe we'll go a long way. It's not gonna be easy, and it's gonna be a lot of time, and that's what we need, but we have to get a handle on this problem because it's only going to get worse.
I appreciate that insight.
I beg you to do something about it.
And we did discuss that today at the beach management committee meeting. Those very items were discussed, so we'll be bringing that forward once we wrap up these meetings, probably in about another month.
Make sure you do it for November the eighteenth.
Jay, just one last thing.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the access that we have, I think it's Stinkies, can you, just last time, because I get a lot of comments that we're not moving forward, and can you please publicly, again, explain where we are on that access?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we had some challenges just with DEP, and then also with our own planning department, there were some setbacks that we had requested, then we came and pulled that back, and so, we are moving forward, and we intend to break ground in about a month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Ms. Bonnie?
Bonnie McQuiston, M C Q U I S T O N. I did not plan to speak, but I want to commend Commissioner Commander. Thank you. This is a huge topic of discussion, the beach vendors and a lot more problems on the beach, and I agree, and so do a lot of the citizens, that this may have triggered this terrible customary use problem we're dealing with now. And I don't know exactly what Mr. Tusa means by they're working on this. I went to one of the TDC council meetings to speak on asking for some changes or asking about what we could do on the beach, and I was told to come to you, the county commission. So, I don't know what this group is, but there's so many problems out there now. The vendors, does anyone know how many? We have vendors out of control. How many vendors do we have? Is there a limit? And I understood, I didn't know until recently, that when they passed the fifty percent rule that vendors could have fifty percent of the public beaches, I thought it meant half over here and half over here. No, they are taking up the fifty percent on the waterfront, beachfront, and then the other, the rest of us get the back part of the beach. So, that, the fires on the beach, we, and my friend got a second-degree burn walking through the hot sand after there was a bonfire in the thing. There is more, there's so much more to it. So, I don't know if there should be a, you know, there was a citizens committee, I don't know if, what the outcome exactly was of that, and what they're now working on that will be different. But thank you for saying that, because that is huge to get the beach under control. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Ms. Bowman?
Once again, this is a problem that you created by issuing too many vending licenses. I want to ask you if you are even aware that the suggestion that you just offered is borderline socialism, communism, that the government should control where you do your business is actually a is actually a socialist mentality. So, anyways, I'm not even aware if you know that you, the, the thoughts that are in your head are so un-American. Anyways, just think about it.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, what's the board's wishes?
We already voted. We voted to listen to Jay.
That's right, voted to listen to Jay, okay. All right.
I got ahead of myself.
I got ahead of myself. Okay, next up, we got a public hearing.
Second.
Read it into the record. Request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution to recognize proportionate fair share funds in the amount of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for the professional design and engineering services for the South Walton Connector Road thirty-eight and ninety-eight.
Wasn't that seven hundred and fifty dollars instead of eighty? I had fifty.
One, it was seven fifty and I think they, they corrected it to the real amount of seven eighty.
Seven eighty is the correct.
Seventy-eight, the other one was a typo.
Motion to you, enter to a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries. We're in public hearing. All right, you heard the request. Is there any public comments at this time? Ms. Bowman. And Celeste, you'll be next.
Koi Bowman, B O W A M A N. Okay, so you want to spend six hundred thousand dollars to figure out where you can put a road that everybody knows can't go through there because we've been through this ten years ago, twenty years ago. Okay, so now, in one of the previous discussions about this, one of the issues was, okay, well, if you're gonna go through State Forest, how are you then going to stop someone from in ten or twenty or even thirty years from now from just building all in there, right? Like, oh, well, the road's already there, so let's put some hi- houses along there, right? Because the road's gonna have to be lit up, so you're gonna have to put electricity through it. So, then, you know, there won't be any wildlife left. So, anyways, I don't know why you have to pay engineers to find a good place to put the road because the road is already there. All you have to do is get on the GPS, of course, not the property appraisers' GPS. You have to go out on the real GPS, which has been updated. And there is now, are you ready? Are you ready to see what's in the forest where you want to put this road?
When you get to it.
This is a one-hundred-house plot that is already in the middle of TIITF forestry. And you want to run a road just to relieve traffic off 30A? Y'all are the biggest scam cover-up people I've ever seen.
Ms. Bowman?
Do you see this? Two hundred, hold on, already in the middle of the forest. Red dirt, never, I'm leaving. Don't touch me. Don't touch me, I'm leaving. You don't have to grasp me out. You just have to act your way.
Ms. Cabina?
Like I said earlier, here we are, lack of planning has caused you to look at our conservation lands, our Point Washington State Forest and Deer Lake State Park. That's the bulk of this study area. And you're not gonna get a road through the forest. You're not gonna get a road through the park. And what you need to do is look at the boundaries. That's what they're gonna tell you when you go ask for this. I don't care how much you spend on studies. They don't care over there at the DEP or the Florida Forestry Service how much you've spent on a study. That's not their problem. That's not their mission. Their mission is to use this property for the purpose for which it was requi- acquired, and that is conservation and passive recreation. And I, I don't understand why you're spending all this money without talking to someone at forestry. Because I can tell you, I picked up the phone today and I called and spoke with Alan Davis in Tallahassee. And I said, do y'all know, I had sent them these documents, they don't, they didn't, unless I send them this, they don't know what's going on. So, I sent them the documents that were attached. And I said, so, you know, and I'm quoting Alan Davis. He said, "Forestry does not support a road through Point Washington State Forest." I don't know why y'all are moving forward with this without forestry support. I, I just don't understand that. You know, that, this is a lot of money, six hundred thousand dollars. From what I understand, you could bury some power lines, you could do a whole lot of stuff with this money, and then do a much smaller study, you know, looking at either widening Highway three ninety-five, you want to put that to four lanes, because that's basically on the border. You're not impacting the middle of conservation land that is ten, twelve acres directly of wetlands. You can look at putting it on the, the eastern boundary there. There's already a, a utility road or some kind of a, a dirt sandy road there on St. Joe's property because this is not going to alleviate any traffic problem on 30A. It's going to create a much larger traffic problem, particularly there if you put it down there at Eastern Lake. Because think about all the stuff that's being put in north of here. You've got the forty thousand-plus homes in Walton County, doesn't even count what you've got in Bay County for that Walton County Sector Plan. And they're gonna all want to go down this road, and it's just gonna clog up 30A there. You make it, some of these planners, they say, you make it a little bit more difficult for people to travel, and you're gonna slow down traffic. So, I suggest somebody get some sort of approval before you spend all this money on this because you're gonna spend it, they're gonna say no.
Chance, if you're out there, would you come forward, please? Explain what your, the ask is on this.
The two thousand and six Genesis study and the update that we did to that ten years later, both identified a need for a road in this vicinity. That need was there in two thousand and six, I believe it was there before that. It's, it's there now. It's there for, for hurricane evacuation. It's a need for emergency services response, congestion relief on 30A. Several things have changed in the vicinity there since, since the two thousand and six study was done. And even, even the most recent study, ten years later, in twenty sixteen, is the sports complex, the new school on, on ninety-eight. A lot of things have changed in that area. The, the need has been shown. The PDNE study, the project development environmental study will look at that entire stretch from three ninety-five to two eighty, I mean, from three ninety-five to Water Sound Parkway and identify where a road can go and what the impacts of that would be and, and how those impacts will be minimized. In, in order for us to, to take this to the next level, to the state level, that PDNE study will have to be completed.
Even if we wanted to put it on the eastern boundary?
You, and, and the, the outcome of that study may be put it on the eastern boundary.
And what's your title?
Traffic operations engineer for Walton County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chance, has, has it, we don't have a study yet that talks about three thirty-one being completed four-laned or the bridge being completed for hurricane evacuation. That, that, that wasn't part of the Atkins study, that was?
It, it was, it was not, but, and, and that did have a tremendous help, but there's still, from, from thirty up to, up to three thirty-one is an issue as well.
Can you please, and it was my assumption when I, the last vote, when I approved the RFQ to go out, where are we on the permitting of the properties by the forestry? Or is that part of it? Where are we, where are we, on the conference, con, I'm sorry, conservation permits, everything to, God, I can't even talk.
I, I think you're, what you're trying to ask is, is do we need you this first or have we gotten the permits? And I think this is the dog and the permits.
This is an expensive dog.
It is, it is a very expensive.
It's what, I, I think it's the cart before the, I think, I, I, I don't think we need to spend six hundred thousand dollars to get an answer that, like, why don't we have an answer that we can move forward already? That's what I was assuming we were.
This would be the answer to move forward. Every, every major project that DOT does begins with a PDNE study to identify the, both the environmental and social impacts of that project. There will be many, many public meetings through this process to gain public input, and there'll be a lot of research done on that whole stretch of property out there to identify the wetlands and the, the sensitive lands that, that, that would be impacted by such a project.
And one of them actually says to a no-build scenario.
That's absolutely right. That, that's always the number one, number one option, not number one option, but the first option is a no-build option.
Not build it. And then that'll take into consideration how much more accessible it is to get down here from, I'm almost in Alabama, three thirty-one and the bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other question?
Just, just to be clear, this has to be done before we can ask for the first permit or permission from the state. Am I correct in that?
This has to be done before, before we can, we can
Even think about it.
Ask for an easement to, to place the road, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Mr. Brook?
Bob Brook, B R O O K E. I was looking ahead, and if I'm, if I'm moving ahead too fast, please tell me and I'll sit down. But I see two items here that look very similar. The numbers are almost identical, although they're off by thirty dollars from thirty-four to thirty-five, if I, if I read the numbers correctly. But is one related to the other?
Yes.
One, one is to authorize use of a certain set of funds, and number two, the second one is to actually commit those funds to a contract. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? What's the board's wishes?
I make a motion that we, the chairman signs a resolution to recognize proportionate fair share funds in the amount of?
Five ninety-seven, seven eighty.
Eighty, for a PNE study.
My second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose.
Nay.
Four one. All right, number thirty-five, I think is Ms. Sed. Oh, we need a motion, close public.
Motion, close public.
Second.
Yeah, motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries.
Commissioners, item number thirty-five, as Mr. Brook pointed out, is the contract associated with the previous item, item number thirty-four. So, we need a motion to approve that contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. Any public comment other than what's already been stated? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose.
Nay.
Four one.
Commissioners, with your permission, I would like to go ahead and address item number thirty-nine, because I think we might have quite a number of people that are here for that. So, this is a request for direction regarding the Seah Island Quiet Title action. Since I included this agenda item in your board packet, I got some good news that I wanted to report to you and to the members of the public. So, this quiet title action was filed by several property owners in the Seah Island subdivision to quiet the title to some breezeways located within that subdivision. And, you know, in my opinion, they mischaracterized Headland Avenue as one of those breezeways. I've been working with Mr. Hall, who this board has authorized us to work with, to research these quiet title actions. And Mr. Hall and I have both had conversations with Mr. Peterman, who represents the plaintiffs in this lawsuit. And Mr. Peterman informed me just this afternoon before I rode down to this meeting that he would be dismissing or dropping his claims as they relate to Headland Avenue. So, at this time, there's no risk that Headland Avenue will be a part, a part of this quiet title action, so we don't need to take any action at this time. But obviously, Mr. Hall and I will continue to monitor this situation. And then if something comes up, I will bring it back to you for your consideration.
Okay. Not only this one here to keep an eye on Steve, but any possible quiet action that may be trying to be taking place out there. Because we got a couple of them that happened a few years back that kinda got us. So, appreciate you keeping up with it.
Also, Steve, if, if you would get with my aide right there and, and set up an appointment, I would like to sit down and talk to you about this. Thank you.
And is there any way that the PDC can take a look at this and see if there's any possible, you know, even it's just like single steps down to the beach? It is our property, could we utilize it?
Commissioner Anderson has an agenda item a little bit further.
Oh, do you? Of course, it's on me.
Okay.
So, with that, we, we don't really need any board action at this time on that item. So, I'll, I will move back to item number thirty-six. This is a request to advertise and schedule a public hearing to consider an ordinance designating the sheriff as the chief correctional officer. And I would request that we set the public hearing for our next board meeting. I've checked with Christine, we can get that advertised for the September twenty-fifth meeting. I know this seems silly, I know. So, back in two thousand and fourteen, the board turned over control of the jail to the sheriff. At that time, we should have executed this ordinance, which formalizes that decision to turn it over to the sheriff. Frankly, the only reason I found out about it is we received a pro se lawsuit from one of the inmates at the jail. And as part of doing my research to respond to that lawsuit, I discovered that we never enacted this ordinance. So, this was just a cleanup to handle that, uh, action the board took in two thousand and fourteen.
It goes back a long ways then, because
Yes, I know.
I remember from eighty-one to two thousand and one, and this was never an issue.
I know.
But if it's something to clean it up and keep them from doing certain action against the subject.
Motion to a hold of public hearing.
On September twenty-fifth.
Yes, I did that.
September twenty-fifth. I'm sorry?
He made the motion I seconded, to hold a public hearing.
Okay. Oh, September twenty-fifth, nine o'clock or shortly, or any time after that, at the courthouse in the pit. Is that correct? Okay. That's a motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Commissioners, item number thirty-seven is a, a request for you to consider, a request from Coastal Innovations Incorporated. Coastal Innovations Incorporated owns the Old Florida Fish House, and they currently have a sign in the 30A right-of-way. And as a result of that, they have a code case that's pending. The violations for the sign in the right-of-way are the fact that it's in the right-of-way. That violates Chapter five of Land Development Code, and also that it's an off-premises sign, which violates Chapter thirteen of the Land Development Code. Mr. Pleat represents Coastal Innovations Incorporated, and I, I put this item on the agenda at Mr. Pleat's request. Old Florida, or Coastal Innovations is set for a code hearing this month. So, Mr. Pleat asked that he be on the board agenda so he could address you guys and see if you would consider the possibility of a right-of-way agreement. I do know that Mac and, I believe also, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department and Buddy Wrights with the Public Works Department looked at this, and they may have some information or recommendations for you. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pleat.
Could I ask a question? Do we intervene before the, the code, it goes before the code book? I mean, they're, they're an entity to themselves.
Yes, ma'am. So, under the code, i- if you have anything in the right-of-way under Chapter five of the Land Development Code, i- it's only a violation if you do not have a right-of-way agreement. So, to cure that particular violation, Mr. Pleat has to come before you. You, you and the county engineer are the only people under the Land Development Code that can give a right-of-way agreement. So, that's why Mr. Pleat is here to ask for that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the county commission. My name is David Pleat from the law firm of Pleat and Perry, and I represent Coastal Innovations LLC. The principal, one of the principals of that company is here, Jill McDonald. She's here this afternoon. Coastal is more locally known as Old Florida Fish House. That's the restaurant that they own and operate at a location that's been there for over thirty years. The specific ask that my client is asking of the county in regards to a right-of-way agreement is to allow the existing monument sign, which has been in that location in some form for over thirty years, to remain in place with a formal right-of-way agreement with the county. As part of that agreement that would be drafted between myself and Ms. Noiz, Coastal would agree that it would be responsible for any and all maintenance on that sign and fully indemnify the county for anything that might result in the county having any expense associated with that sign. I can't think what that would be, but we would put a full indemnity clause in there as well. Some brief history, this location of this sign for that restaurant location goes back over thirty years on this site into the late nineteen eighties, when Mr. Bill Hodge erected the Bayou Bill Crab House sign at this location. In nineteen ninety-four, Bayou Ann's took over the restaurant and their sign was erected. And you'll see a picture of the Bayou Ann's sign in the packet you should have received prior to today. In nineteen ninety-nine, Joe Mustaccio purchased the restaurant, and he also erected signs. There was a Mexican restaurant there for a while, Luna Noche, and then Old Florida Fish House after that. And Old Florida Fish House continues to operate today. House continues to operate today. One, I have some pictures of the sign in here in this package, and also some pictures of some other signs, because the code violation referenced the fact that they were not contiguous to thirty-eight. Their parcel wasn't contiguous. And I just point that out for reference purposes, that there's the four-corner gray and signs, which are in the right-of-way, as I understand it, which are not contiguous to the actual land owned by any of those restaurants, and also the Whiskey Bravo sign at the corner of ninety-eight and three ninety-five. By way of reference, there's some context. This has been here over thirty years. In Florida, prescriptive easements only require twenty years in order to seek a prescriptive easement. We've been having this discussion with the county through its representatives for a period of a couple years now. In late, in early January of two thousand and seventeen, I received correspondence, which is part of the package, from Mr. Davis, then county attorney, who summed it up, I think fairly succinctly. He said, "It is fairly arguable that the sign should be allowed to remain since it has been in place since before adoption of the code, and the county would merely need to negotiate a right-of-way agreement with Coastal Innovations to allow it to remain." I know there are arguments that the sign was significantly modified since the code and thus lost its grandfathered status, but I would strongly suggest, though I certainly cannot guarantee, that the code board and commission would frown on such an argument and would allow it to remain with the execution of a right-of-way agreement. Given its long history in the current location and the community's familiarity with the restaurant, I would opine neither board would want it required its relocation. The only reservation at the time that Mr. Davis mentioned was to ensure that my client would not object if the contiguous landowner, Codamolo, wanted to have a sign in the right-of-way. They would not object, and my client has never objected to Codamolo seeking, and I think they are seeking a sign in the right-of-way. For those reasons, I would ask that the county consider the decades-long location of this sign, the agreement that would put full responsibility of the maintenance of the sign on my client and allow it to remain in its place that it's been for thirty years.
I guess my question would be, because wouldn't this be something that would be like grandfathered in or something?
No, that's a good question. And Mr. Pleat did bring up Mr. Davis's letter that was written in two thousand and sixteen. But one significant change has occurred since Mr. Davis wrote that letter. Mr. Pleat's client and Codamolo were involved in a lawsuit that dealt with the rights to an easement where the, close to where that sign was located. And as a result of that lawsuit, the easement that Coastal Innovations had was extinguished. So it's no longer, they no longer have an easement right where that sign is located. So that's a significant change to when Mr. Davis wrote his letter. So now this sign is also an off-premises sign. It's, Old Florida Fish House has no frontage on thirty-eight. So this sign now violates two provisions of the code. It's in the right-of-way, which is a problem, but it also is an off-premises sign, which violates the scenic corridor standards in chapter thirteen.
If I may respond. It's okay.
Go ahead.
Ms. Norris, respectfully, the easement involved did not involve the right-of-way itself, where this sign has been located for many years. And the reason I included these other examples, just a couple of examples of where right-of-way signs exist, where restaurants do not have contiguous contact with the area where the sign in the right-of-way is, is to show that other proprietors of restaurants in this county do enjoy signage in the right-of-way, I'm assuming through right-of-way agreements, where they don't have contiguous land that touches. And I don't think any of the signs that exist in right-of-ways currently outdate the thirty years plus that this sign location has been used for that restaurant, which is Old Florida Fish House.
If you would like, I know that Mr. Carpenter's here. I know he has an opinion on it, and I think Buddy also has looked at it as well.
Okay. I want to hear from Mac. I also want to hear from Russ, the code officer who's been involved in investigating this thing, and also Buddy Wright, if he's out the hallway. Okay. I'll go with Mac, and then Buddy, and then Russ. Mac?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular sign, actually, they have been granted another ground sign permit with the intent to remove this sign several months ago. They have a sign at their legal access, which is the next street to the east beyond the condominium building, where this particular sign was sited immediately to the west. So they do have a sign now. It's located in the easement that provides legal access to the Fish House restaurant. One of the particular examples Mr. Pleat gave involves a sign on U.S. Highway ninety-eight that says Whiskey Bravo. Much to my chagrin, several years ago, I thought that was an off-premise sign. It actually is permitted as an outdoor advertising billboard by FDOT, and it has been maintained in good standing during the entire time the wheelhouse was closed. And they purchased the rights to that billboard when they purchased the property where the wheelhouse was previously located. So that sign is perfectly legal. The other sign, so I'm not familiar with the details that he just provided, but if you'd like to make a complaint on any of those, we'd be happy to process that through code enforcement.
Well, I think we need to focus in on the one that's up here today, and that's the Old Florida Fish House sign, not a litany of ones that were supplied here, because we haven't had the opportunity, because there's been no complaint filed on those.
That's correct.
It's just reference to it, that it's not provided y'all the opportunity to go out and do the research to find out if it's grandfathered in or whatever the case may be. So I would prefer we stick to the Old Florida Fish sign. That's what's before the board. Anything else, Mac? Any questions, Mac? Okay. Buddy?
Just a second, please. Mac, okay, this is, this sign was, has been there a long time, and it was, when this was the entrance to Old Florida Fish House?
Yes.
That sign has been there for a while.
And it was the former entrance to Old Florida Fish House. It's no longer the entrance to Old Florida Fish House.
And do they have another sign?
Yes, after the current entrance.
That has been properly permitted with the county.
Wasn't there, excuse me, wasn't there a fence being put up or something that was partially in the road or easement or something?
Yes, sir. At that particular entrance, and that relates to another dispute between the neighbors on either side of that entrance not involving the Fish House, or that particular sign. That fence has been significantly removed as of today. However, the posts around lunchtime were still in place, blocking access to the dumpster that's overflowing.
Does it affect Florida Fish House?
No, sir.
All right, Buddy?
For the record, Buddy Wright, Walton County Public Works. Sidney did ask us to look at the sign, and we had our surveyor go out, and the entirety of the sign is in the right-of-way. We do manage the right-of-way agreements. However, in the right-of-way agreement, it doesn't allow Public Works to permit a sign in the right-of-way. It refers back to the Land Development Code in that section. And to my knowledge, the seven or eight years I've been at Public Works, we have not issued a right-of-way permit for a sign.
I have another question for Mac. If we allowed this sign to be grandfathered in, how would that affect the other sign?
Well, Land Development Code allows one ground sign.
So it's either or?
Yes, sir. And they have one that's been properly permitted that's adjacent to the easement that provides legal access to this restaurant. My concern about what, I mean, certainly the board is within its authority to do whatever decision you choose to make. My concern would be the precedent that it would set, allowing main ID signs within the right-of-way. How do we turn down the next person?
If, if we did allow this sign, would there be a code violation on the other sign?
On one or the other, because you can only have one according to the present Land Development Code regulations related to ground signs.
Okay.
For development of this particular site.
Okay, thank you.
The scenic quarter has an influence on this location and signage, too?
Substantial. This is a chapter seven issue, which is not scenic quarter, which is our base sign code. The additional information in chapter thirteen, I don't think would be applicable in this case.
Then you want to hear from the coastal officers?
Yeah, I want to, I want to forward it.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Kurt Rose. That's R-O-S-E, Walton County Code Enforcement Officer. Pretty much everybody
Kurt, let me just ask a question.
Go right ahead.
Maybe that's the best way to do this. You received a complaint concerning this signage?
We did.
Who from?
Codamolo Holdings.
Okay. Did you have
Codamolo Holdings.
Okay.
That is the newest addition to that area that affronts highway, or highway thirty-eight.
Okay. And the complaint was what?
Now, there's actually a three-part complaint. Part one is it's built in the right-of-way. Part two is it's an off-premise sign, and part three is it's built outside of the building code.
And you did an investigation and
That is correct.
And what was your finding?
That all three apply. Everything else has been pretty well addressed, except for the building code one. They claim the sign has been there in the same location exactly since Time Memorial. However, in two thousand and six, they applied for a building permit to have that particular sign that you see in those pictures erected. It was not built in the location that the building permit was allowed it to be built. It was built off of that site by about thirty feet or so away, moving it into the right-of-way and away from where it was supposed to be located. It also did not go through the building permit process. The building permit required it to get a foundation inspection. It did not. The building permit required it to get a final inspection. It did not. The building permit required that no electric was allowed to be brought to the sign. There are currently lights that illuminate the sign. Irregardless of the action of having a right-of-way agreement or not, the building code would still stand with this, that it would still be in violation as it sits.
Okay. Any questions? Do you have anything else, Jermaine, you want to add to this?
No, sir. I think everybody else has covered pretty much everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pleat?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, as to the sign that was referenced by Mr. Carpenter, that is a leased sign amongst other proprietors of businesses on a sign on private land with an expiration on that lease, which when it expires would leave my client without any signage whatsoever on thirty-eight. Thus, the concern about losing that which she purchased as part of the restaurant, which is the monument sign itself.
Excuse me, Mr. Pleat?
Yes, sir.
Am I mistaken in thinking that there's another monument sign there?
It's not a monument sign, Commissioner Anderson. It's a, it's a placard sign that has several businesses on it, Buddy Seafood.
There's not a, there's not a sign by your entrance, ma'am. A monument-type sign by your entrance?
There's not a monument sign. There was a loose sign.
Ma'am. Ma'am, you have to come up here and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Jill McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-D.
Okay.
There is a, there was a sign at the corner of thirty-eight and East County Highway, I'm sorry, Harren's Watch and East County Highway thirty-eight, that is owned by the man that owns the business that Yellowfin is in, and I believe it's an architectural firm in front of that. And the sign was falling down, and they made a proposal to me that if I would pay for the sign, they would give me room on the sign. So we spent the money to put our name on that sign, but it's only a short-term lease on that sign, and he has already informed me that it would not be renewed. So we do have a sign at the corner of thirty-eight in Harren's Watch, which is nowhere near where this other sign is that you're talking about. It's about two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet, I would believe, farther east from the current sign. And like I said, it's not, it's on a different parcel of property compared to the parcel where the sign has been for the thirty, for the thirty years. But it's not a long-term sign. It's not a long-term solution for us, and when that goes away, then we would not have a presence anymore on thirty-eight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson made a reference to either or with the signs. I don't want to speak for Ms. McDonald, but I understand from my conversations with her, the monument sign is the one that they would want to keep, and they would gladly remove the other sign if that in any way caused conflict regarding the comments that Mr. Carpenter referenced about having two signs.
Mac, come up here and clarify that for me.
One last thing to add. There actually is language in chapter thirteen that speaks to a prohibition of signs in the right-of-way, in addition to the language that's in chapter seven that relates to all signs. But chapter thirteen has some specific language about the prohibition of signs in the right-of-way.
Okay. Going a step further, I find, heard from Code over there a minute ago, this sign that I've got a picture of, I assume is the sign that's in question, and it was, went to get a building permit. Was it ever issued? It was issued. They were required to build it according to the code, and what Code is telling me is they did not build it in the right spot. They put power to it, which they weren't supposed to. It's never been inspected anywhere else, so it's an illegal sign, in my opinion, per se.
I would agree with that. One additional point related to the location of that existing sign, it would tend to direct people into the driveway where we have the fence built in the drive-off between Buddy Seafood and Codamolo. That is no longer the entrance to the Old Florida Fish House, and that would drive additional traffic through that parking lot that would have to exit to the north, I mean, to the east, and circle back to the north to enter the Old Florida Fish House, which would create certainly an inconvenience to the public. They'd be driving into a parking lot, looking for a business that's not in that parking lot.
Well, the other thing is, we've had a few issues over the years where people built where they weren't supposed to build, that resulted in them having to remove it and put it where it's supposed to be. And in this particular case, from the pictures that I have seen, the county right-of-way would be on the north side of the sign, right down, right down the back. So somebody messed up when they went out there, started building the thing. It didn't bother to figure out where it was supposed to be, in my opinion, and they didn't bother to do it by the code. They didn't get it inspected. It's, it's just out there. And so that's my position on that.
I originally, when we started this discussion, felt like, you know, maybe we should look at it and grandfather it in. But after listening to all the testimony, especially that, you know, building permit was never obtained, you know, the lighting's been put there at Shutton, I, unfortunately, because I feel bad, have to agree with Commissioner Chapman. It's in the wrong place. It needs to be removed and, if possible, put on their property or put closer to actually where their business is. And maybe they, if they could go through the right process the next time.
Yep.
So I'll make that in form of a motion. Do we need one?
Over to a motion to deny the
A motion to deny the right-of-way, sign in the right-of-way.
Okay. Got a motion?
I second.
Is there room for her to put a sign at her entrance?
It would have to either be on somebody else's property, which we could not permit without their permission.
Well, they actually have a sign adjacent to thirty-eight now, as Mr. Pleat had mentioned. So that qualifies as a main ID sign for that particular development. Could they put one actually on the edge of their parking lot down the street? We would certainly consider that as a directional sign that makes sure people get to the right parking lot. And we'd be happy to work with the applicant on that particular topic.
Any questions? Yes, go forward.
Dave Rochkolb, R-A-U-S-C-H-K-O-L-B. When I opened Bud and Alley's in nineteen eighty-six, there were five places to eat on thirty-eight. And when Bayou Bill's opened up, they were, I believe, the sixth. And at that time, there were no other businesses there. There was just a restaurant on the lake, and they put up their sign. I'm speaking about this because, you know, every business needs a sign, you know, and, and this, this dispute would not even exist if it weren't for the dispute between the newcomer on the side of the road and, and, you know, disputing a sign that's been there for thirty years. So, so in defense of a businessperson, because I'm a businessperson and I'm a restaurateur, I think that The losing of that driveway certainly is going to impact her business. And now that the driveway's different, people are going to drive by, they're going to not know where to get in, and they might drive by it because they're used to going in that one driveway. So, because they're about to drive over a bridge, they're going to be less likely to turn around and go back to that restaurant because there's a new entrance. So, that's even more important for Old Florida Fish House to have some sort of signage that is not a temporary sign, you know? They have that lease that's about ready to go away. And I don't know if you're going to be able to solve this right now, but I would think that there should be some language in there that guarantees that she's going to have a sign for her business so that she doesn't lose business. And let's recognize that this is the result of a dispute. Nobody had any problem with that sign until her neighbor came in and they all got in a fight, and we all know what happens when that stuff happens. It's unfortunate. So, just think about that. Think about providing for her to have adequate signage. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess while this gentleman comes up, I would suggest to the board, you know, this is something, if you deny their request for a right-of-way agreement today, that does not preclude Old Florida Fish House from coming back later when the lease does expire. But that might be something that you could address at that time.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Keith Olery, O-L-E-A-R-Y. I'm the owner of the property that is on thirty-eight. And you talk about me being the newcomer and, you know, causing problems. All I did was buy a piece of property, try to develop it. And we learned that this sign that's on thirty-eight, it's actually touching my property line, shouldn't be there because it's an off-premise sign. I tried to work with Fish House to share the sign, and they didn't want to do that. And I need signage. I can't have that sign blocking a sign that I might put up there. So, my only recourse was to complain about the sign and have the county enforce the code, which is take the sign down. But I strenuously object to them having a sign in front of my property because it's causing a major problem. As Mr. Carpenter mentioned, people are pulling into my driveway thinking we're the Fish House, and they're getting caught in our driveway. And it's causing traffic jams on thirty-eight. It's creating hazards. People are parking in my spots. And so, what I'll be hap- you know, I don't want to tow cars, but that's the situation that's being created by having a sign that's not in front of the actual business. As we discussed earlier, as you all discussed, it's an off-premise sign, it's not allowed by code. It's unfortunate for Fish House that they have a property that's not on thirty-eight, but that's the reality. They do have a sign on Harren's Watch, which I don't think anyone mentioned. They have three signs now. One on Harren's Watch, one on the corner of thirty-eight and Harren's Watch, and this other monument sign that sits directly in front of my property. The other thing about the grandfather rights, there is no grandfather rights to this sign. I think there's been some doubt created, but I have surveys, which I'll hand to you, that show wood post sign, which is probably what was referenced in Mr. Pleat's pictures, that is in a different location than this sign. We've overlaid two surveys. It won't be in your documents there if you want to hand that out. We have two surveys we overlaid that show the relative locations of these two signs, and they're completely different locations. So, not only is the sign not grandfathered in because it's in a different location, it's a completely different sign. The sign in the picture of Mr. Pleat provided is a plastic sign with wood posts, and the sign that's there now is a concrete and masonry sign with a steel structure. Two different signs. Grandfather rights don't apply. So, this illusion that the sign has been there forever is not true. And I think that Fish House has opportunities to have signage on Harren's Watch, social media, they can advertise, they can do what they want. They've been there a long time, so they know, a lot of people know about this restaurant. And Mr. Rothkob mentioned about business. I have a business, too. I'm trying to open a business there, and I can't open a business if with a sign, it's being blocked by another business's sign that's not even there. So, I would respectfully remind you that I have rights, too. And I don't need a sign in the right-of-way. I could put a sign on my property. But if that sign stays there, it's going to block visibility to my business. There's electrical lines that aren't permitted there. It's not a safe sign unless it gets permitted properly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public question?
You call a question. Okay, we got a motion and a second to deny the right-of-way agreement.
The request for a right-of-way agreement.
To the request for a right-of-way agreement. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
But I do urge, Matt, to get with this lady, and let's see what we can do to help her. You know, where else can she put the sign? How can we do it? I urge that we do try to work with her every way possible so that she can actually have a sign closer to her business of, you know, where people, when they turn in, they know it's there and they stay there.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be very happy to do that. It is very important that businesses have adequate signage that complies with the code, and we will absolutely assist her in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number thirty-eight is a request for direction regarding the opioid litigation RFQ. As you may remember, I want to say back in, well, January or February, it was while I was on maternity leave, you gave us direction to advertise an RFQ for a law firm to represent us in possible opioid litigation. We advertised that. We did have a RFQ committee. It was Heather and I and Major Preston from the Sheriff's Office. And we made a recommendation and brought that back to you. Whenever we brought it back to you, there were some questions about us not conducting an interview of the applicants. So, what I'm requesting that we do here today is reject the bids that were previously submitted as a part of the RFQ, that you allow us to re-advertise for a new RFQ, and then that you guys give us some direction about who you want on the selection committee and whether or not you want interviews conducted.
As far as I'm concerned, the two county attorneys and Major Preston is okay as far as that committee.
Okay.
I think the sheriff's got to play in this thing with a lot of data and what have you to supply, and of course, we're doing a litigation. Do you need it in part of the RFQ that there be an interview for anybody coming in?
Well, the standard language in our RFQ states that we will conduct an interview if the selection committee deems it necessary.
Did y'all deem it necessary?
But because there was questions about it, you know, we thought it best just to start the process over. And then you guys tell us, do you want us to do an interview? Do you not want us to do an interview? And then we can make it explicitly clear.
Would doing an interview give you more information on making a-
It could. It could. It may delay us making the selection, though, just scheduling that.
Are we under a time crunch?
No.
Okay. Give them that answer, second.
All right, well, do you need a motion as to make up of the committee?
I do need a motion to reject the previous bids and to authorize us to go out for new bids, and then just direction as far as the committee's concerned.
I make a motion, we reject the bids and go out for new bids.
A second?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose.
Oh, I think we have.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Public comment, though, okay?
Two seconds, come on.
Just information.
Just information, all right.
Jeremiah Mosley, M-O-S-L-E-Y, law firm of Riley and Jackson, and we're one of the submitting law firms. The only thing I would put out there is that there is, there are some deadlines that have come up recently in the multi-district litigation where y'all's lawsuit will ultimately probably end up, and those deadlines are in December. So, it's not to say if we miss that deadline or whoever y'all hire misses that deadline that it can't be fixed, but the way I see it, rather than opening up a new RFQ and taking another three to four months, have the interviews make a selection. That's going to take less time and give whatever firm you select the opportunity to try to meet that deadline for y'all and be in that first wave of counties that's going to try to get these issues resolved. That's the only information I'd like to pass along.
We can get it done by December, well, before December. So, whatever law firm we select can meet that deadline.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion and a second? So, the motion is to reject the RFQs-
Reject and re-advertise.
And re-advertise. So, that's the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. You need anything else regarding that other than direction on the makeup of the committee?
Just direction, but I mean, I think I have it.
Well, that's mine. I didn't bother looking at the other board.
I agree. I mean, the only other person I would ask to, because of law enforcement, do we want to add the city police, or are we good with the Sheriff's Department?
I believe the city's investigating their own claims.
Oh, okay. All right. So, that answers that question. Yeah, I'm fine with the committee.
Okay. All right. Item number forty is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a notice to opt into a class-action lawsuit regarding the payment in lieu of taxes statute. You have the information in your board packet. This is, you know, we'll probably receive nominal funds if anything is part of this, but we also won't lose anything by opting into this class-action lawsuit.
Yeah, I believe we would probably only be, it's like thirty thousand dollars. And if you know what the P-I-L-T is, it's payment in lieu of taxes. The government pays us stuff so that we don't charge them for property taxes. They give us some penance to keep, get something leased in return without getting nothing if we didn't have it. But we're trying to work with, apparently, we've got some counties that are within the country that are having a major impact, that's having a major impact on their ability to fund their particular operations. And so, we'll just see how it goes. So, you want to?
Need a motion.
Need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Okay, next up, Commissioner Commander. You got anything?
I've already said my piece, sir.
Okay. All right, next up is Commissioner Nipper. I believe we got a couple items.
Request to accept the resignation of Mr. Gladwell on the planning commission.
Does that inform the motion?
I make a motion to request to accept his resignation.
Okay, that's motion, accept his resignation. We got a second?
Sarah.
Sarah says a second.
Second, did you say, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Forty-two, appointment District Three Planning Commission member.
Make a motion to appoint Gary Adams for the District Three Planning Commission member.
Do we have his application?
Yes.
Do we know what?
Do we have it?
Did he?
We don't have one from him? Okay.
I ask that we postpone this until we do have his application.
You're supposed to, Old Volunteer is supposed to submit an application for volunteer for any committee.
I understand.
She hasn't got one on there, but we haven't seen anything.
Susan, was his?
She was going to mail it through admin.
Okay, my apologies. If it hasn't gone through, I apologize. So, admin didn't get it yet? Okay. All right, well, I need to-
Withdraw it.
Withdraw.
And the proper procedure, just from my understanding, is that we have, we open the position up and see who would like to apply, and then she can choose whomever she wants to?
We have done that in the past. We've advertised for vacancies. We can do that if you'd like.
I'd rather not. I've been asking because I know there's a couple of committees, and I would prefer to put in someone that I've vetted. I've been doing this for a while, trying to get people for, knowing the planning committee, this was going up for the planning commission and other committees. So, I'm not required to, am I?
What is possible?
I don't think but, because I asked. Yeah.
Or district appointment.
But you understand that we don't have to vote for your appointee?
Oh, I know that for sure. Yeah. We all learned that lesson.
Okay. Just so you know.
Okay, let's see, what else? Ms. Nipper, did you have an additional?
That's it, sir.
I'm sorry. Ms. Jones?
No, definitely.
Tony?
I've got a couple. I would like to take seventy-seven hundred dollars from my rec plat fee to buy a commercial style stove, which was for Helen McCall Park. It was, it was, I think, on the plans to do a commercial-type stove. There's a commercial-type good in there. And we need, you know, there are a lot of people go out there, so we need a big stove. We don't need just a regular stove. And we, you know, we spent two million dollars, two-plus million dollars on that park, and I don't think it's time to scrimp now, so that's a motion.
Okay, it's a motion.
Second.
Got a second? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
I would hope at some time that we look at upgrading some of the other parks in Walton County. You know, we have to beg recreational plat fee money from other sources, that we take a look at, you know, upgrading some of the others as well.
And I think I've been-
You think there was agenda, was just you have-
I don't have as much as you do, but I have helped Sarah and Sia out. I think maybe yours, too.
And maybe we need to look at our Parks Department, too, not only recreational plat fee money, but how can we, because it seems like our children population is, I mean, is increasing. So, how do we improve the rest of the parks and maybe look at, probably, Parks Department for additional funding?
All right, Tony, I think you got one more?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the TDC to evaluate county-owned beach properties and continue searching for beach properties that are available to purchase and give us a report on where everything is, how we're standing with everything.
Yes, sir. We actually have a handful, whoa, we actually have a handful of properties that we currently own, and then I have been working with some realtors on some other properties for purchase, so we'll bring those forward to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jack. And that's all I have.
All right, I don't have anything. We've got several citizens' requests, and some of them appears to be, could take a little bit of time. So, don't take a recess to allow the board the opportunity to- Is it on? Hello? Now it's on. Okay. Next up on the agenda is citizens' requests. First one is number forty-five, South Walton Community Council review of Kimley Horn thirty-eight, three ninety-five safety study.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Ryan Weatherill with Kimley Horn. Was asked by South Walton Community Council to assist them with a review of County Road thirty-eight at County Road three ninety-five intersection, looking at it from an operations and safety perspective, following on the study that was done by Atkins with the county and then the signal design and installation that has subsequently gone in at that intersection. Wanted to drill down just a little bit further and look at the pedestrians and the safety at that intersection and come before you this evening. I recognize we're late into the evening. I'll try to be quick as I go through this, but feel free to stop me if you have any questions as we go through it. So, quickly, as I noted, the idea was to review the intersection and the areas surrounding the intersection to look at the crash trends over the past number of years, as well as particularly focus on the bicycle and pedestrian movements in and around the intersection. Just as a little bit of framework from that previous study, the County Road thirty-eight has approximately nine thousand four hundred vehicles per day on it. It's a pretty healthy number, but it's certainly not quite over capacity as far as a two-lane road goes. Three ninety-five has a little bit more than that, it's just under eleven thousand. Again, a significant amount of traffic in approaching what would be capacity for a two-lane facility with the number of accesses and whatnot along there. And as I noted, we were looking at the signal and the operations there, and you can see after the signal went in, the bicyclists that are starting to stack up as they wait to push that button to cross. I noted the fact that we reviewed the concept and went out there and looked at the intersection as it was in construction, had a stakeholder meeting, and was fortunate enough to have your staff there with us, which was a nice add so that we could have that informed conversation about what was going on and the plans that were being implemented. And that meeting took place on May fourteenth, just ahead of season really getting kicked off. Subsequently, made a stop by here in the middle of August to take a look at all the progress that had been made sort of towards the end of the season. I noted the fact that we reviewed the concept and went out there and looked at the intersection as it was in construction, had a stakeholder meeting, and was fortunate enough to have, have your staff there with us, which was a nice add so that we could have that informed conversation about what was going on and the plans that were being implemented. And that meeting took place on May fourteenth, just ahead of season really getting kicked off. Subsequently, subsequently made a stop by here in the middle of August to take a look at all the progress that had been made sort of towards the end of the season. So as you look at the crash history in this area and looking at either side of thirty-eight and then up three ninety-five, you see over this time period, this five-year time period that we looked at, there were fifty-seven total crashes. Fortunately, no fatalities. Twelve of them did result in injuries. Four of them were bicycle crashes and one was a pedestrian.
All right, Ryan, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
That, that data you're showing there is within a half a mile of this intersection.
Yes, sir.
Of those numbers there, how many at that?
I'm getting ready to get that, get to that. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, and, and, and we're talking about the overall trail as it comes through this area. As you know, to the east, it is on the south side. To the west, it is on the north. For a little bit further through seaside and then comes back to the south side again. So we'll get, we'll talk through some of that. But what's interesting to look at here is oftentimes we think of the conflict as being the fault of the driver. Of these five bicycle and pedestrian crashes collectively, four of them were the fault of the bicycle or pedestrian user. So they don't always necessarily follow the rules of the road. And of that other one, it was unclear on who was at fault there. So I think it's important to understand it's not always the, the motorist that is, is having the trouble negotiating these areas. Sometimes it's the bicycle and pedestrian user. As you look at the crash trends, you can see that they certainly increase around spring break and then stay high through the peak season. Again, noting that more than fifty percent of those are during May, June, July, and August. The interesting thing about that is the fact that you have an increase in folks through this area that are changing on a weekly basis, if not more frequently, and that may not be necessarily familiar with the, the facilities, whether they're bicycle and pedestrian users or in vehicles. So again, we've got to understand that there's traffic that's changing, doesn't get to be comfortable necessarily with the facilities in the area and begins to have some conflicts there. So here's a map that shows the crashes. As you can see, they're scattered along the corridor, both along, and hopefully you have a copy of this in the report that we prepared and provided. But you can see they're scattered along the corridor, both up three ninety-five as well as along thirty-eight. And we note on here the bicycle and pedestrian crashes as well. There are a handful of them that happened there at the intersection and that some that have, have injuries. One of the things to take a look at when you think of a T-intersection is the conflict points. There are seventeen total conflict points at an intersection such as this. Eight of those are vehicle and pedestrian, you know, conflicts where the pedestrian crossing the road would have a conflict with one of the vehicles. And you can see that we've highlighted those on the graphic of where that occurs. Nine others are vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points. And that's important to understand as we talk about the opportunity to improve the safety at the intersection. Not to say that the intersection is not safe, but there's an opportunity for a safer solution here. One of the things that's important is DOT.
Ryan, I'll give you a minute to wrap it up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. One of the things that's important is to recognize the cost of crashes. A fatal crash, which of course didn't happen in this time period, but is, is a possibility, is a ten million dollar cost. That's not a number I came up with. That's a number that DOT came up with. An incapacitating injury, of which we had several, is over a half million dollars in cost. So when we think about these improvements, we have to understand that. Again, you can take a look at this and over that area that we studied, it was almost three million dollars in total cost. And when you break out the portion that was related specifically to bicycle and pedestrian users, it was over a, over a million dollars in cost associated with those. Again, as you look at this, by moving it to the south side, you reduce forty percent of those conflict points. You lessen those and you reduce the impact. It's consistent with the study completed by the county. And the ask is to consider further the opportunity to improve safety at this intersection.
Okay. Chance, I think I send you come in. Can you speak to what he's talking about? I mean, I'm looking at his, what was provided here on the five-year crash analysis. And the bicycles, doesn't show any bicycle crashes in that interchange. There's only one pedestrian involvement there in the, the intersection. In some cases, they're north Dothan Avenue is where one bicycle, one somewhat a couple blocks or three blocks north of thirty-eight on three ninety-five, and then the rest of them are west towards seaside, seaside. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think if you, if you look at the data he's provided, maybe our focus should be other places than the intersection right now. The, the, the intersection itself, which I, you know, let, let's, let's, I'm gonna be quite honest. I've always said that I thought the path should be on the south side of the road. I'm, I'm not gonna hide that in fact. But, but conditions occurred that were, we could not accomplish that. The, we designed the intersection with a signalized intersection, and what currently exists out there is a safe intersection. Yes, you could remove conflict points by moving that path to the south side.
Well, do you truly remove the conflict points? There, I'm counting in one of these pictures here, there's about eight or nine driveways that impact that thing on the south side. People backing in and out of their property.
That, that is true. You know, I've, I've, I've thought of that and looked at that as well. The, the difference for me is the path, the path crosses several driveways up and down thirty-eight. Standard traffic counts for a single-family residential home is ten point one vehicles per day. It would take a lot of driveways to add up to ten thousand cars coming down three ninety-five. But, you know, aside from that, three ninety-five intersection is a safe intersection as it is designed and implemented right now.
If, if, excuse me?
Go ahead.
If, if we decided to do something, if we were legally able to do something because of the contract we have with them, I'm not sure if we are. But if we were, how long would it take for us to move the utilities and things like that?
Here's where we are right now. This is a good time for me to, to, to discuss the intersection and, and its long-term improvement plan there. As you know, we initially decided that, that to, to implement all the improvements as, as approved by the board, when we approved option one, in, I believe, January of twenty sixteen. We moved forward with a design. That design was to implement a signalized intersection there with turn lanes at all three approaches, and the path would be on the north side of the intersection. It was our goal initially for that to be a three-year project, that that would, that would take place over three off-seasons, so to speak. And in the first year, our initial goal was only to relocate utilities on three ninety-five north and maybe get the turn lane in. I believe it was Commissioner Commander asked, we've got to get more of this turn lane in, try to get something. We did everything we could, and we ultimately got the signalization in. And that was all in phase one. Everything that's sitting out there right now, with the exception of that signal head, is pretty much temporary as, as that whole plan goes. All of thirty-eight, per that plan, has to shift north about twelve feet through that intersection. Three ninety-five has to get tore up to get a forty-two inch stormwater pipe put under it. And there's still utilities that have to be relocated on thirty-eight to accommodate all of that. From this point forward, the improvements that we make there, the only, the only, I guess, real benefit that the public's gonna see is a little bit of a stormwater improvement during heavy rain events. As far as tweaking the optimization of the intersection anymore, the only thing that we're gonna be able to do is move that path to the south side after eight and a half years from now, if, if we stick to the agreement. I don't know that it's, that it's worth the impact to the public to, to go through those improvements over the next two years or three years, to move those utilities, move that road north, to really see no optim, optimizational, if I'm saying that right, Ryan, help me out, an optimization inter, in, in intersection improvement for, for eight years, you know, when, when we have to put the path on the south side, if we get to put the path on the south side, I guess what I'm trying to say. I see a lot of blank stares. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
We don't have to put it on the, on the south side. It is just a recommendation that we do so.
It, it, it's, it's, it was always a recommendation of mine that it, that it be there. I know that we have an agreement with the EBSCO Corporation to not place it there for ten years from the agreement approval date, which I think was about a year and a half ago now. So I guess where I'm going with this discussion is, I would like to, to leave the intersection as it is. You know, we're still gonna work on some localized stormwater improvements where, where we have some drainage issues on the east side of the intersection near Azalea and Gardenia Street where the bike path is under, underwater. We're gonna implement an improvement project there immediately after the season this year. Another one to the west, near the intersection of Nightcap, we're gonna rebuild the bike path north of Forest Street up to Canal Street. Regional Utilities has a few utility improvements to, to, to make at the intersection. And then I, I would like to, to hold off on any other major improvements until we can accommodate all the improvements associated with the intersection at, at some later date.
You think the signal we put there has solved most of the problems for now?
You know, I, I, that's surely what I hear. I, I hear that, it, you know, I've, I've heard nothing but, but great things about it, and everybody's very pleased with it.
Well, that's the comments I've gotten, emails I've got, is that they, it seems to knock down a lot of the backup. No conflicts or issues, at least from these folks that talked to me or sent an email.
And we'll continue to monitor that and, and, and make any timing tweaks to it that we can to, to, to squeak every bit of the improvements that we can out of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak? Mr. Tricker?
Thank you, Fred Tricker, T R I C K E R, representing South Walton Community Council. And I want to thank Kimley Horn for putting this study together for us. We think it's an important study. We have to acknowledge right off the bat that the improvements that were put in there have, have worked remarkably well. There's no question about it. But I guess from our perspective, that was mostly about moving traffic. Traffic moves through the intersection very nicely. I live near there, and it's, it's been really, really, it's made a big, big difference. However, the problem is still that we didn't do that much for the pedestrians and the bicyclists. They, it is safer now than it was before. There's no question. But there's still potential for somebody to do something stupid. And we've heard and we've seen incidents where people on bikes and walking don't obey the lights, and that's to be expected. And for the most part, they're kind of watching for the cars and dodging them or whatever they're doing, try to stay safe, stay safe. But something's gonna, something has the potential to happen. So I guess our view is if it's avoidable, we should look at it seriously. And I sat through a lot of the board meetings when the EBSCO contract was under consideration. There was a lot of talk about safety at that time. And I recall that we were told, and matter of fact, Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson asked a question, that if the county wanted to move the bike path at any time, could they do it? And I think?
Mr. Anderson on board when the contract was agreed to.
Okay, it was subsequent to the signing of the contract. There was a discussion about safety.
No, I think the contract had been already signed.
That's true.
And, and this was after I came on board in sixteen.
Yeah, you're right. But, but do you recall that conversation? And the answer was yes. You can move the bike path anytime that you want. And that was after the contract was signed.
If, if there was a safety issue, I think.
If there was a safety issue, exactly. And on at least two occasions, the current, or the previous county attorney, Mark Davis, told us that the county, that the county has the authority, for reasons of health, safety, and welfare, to do whatever they need to do, regardless of any contract they have with anybody regarding that intersection. So you have the authority to make those changes. It does not put you in breach of the contract. And I think it is something that y'all should consider seriously. A forty percent reduction in risk is not insignificant. I would point out that if we keep growing at the rate we are growing in terms of tourist traffic, it's gonna double by twenty twenty-six. So what is now a manageable situation might not be by the time you wait the eight years. So here's the bottom line. You want to?
Three minutes are up.
I know. I'm gonna give you ten seconds to wrap it up, please.
You got a choice. What, what's a safety event? Is a safety event waiting for somebody to get seriously hurt? Or is it to use a professional study of the intersection that shows that you can reduce risk? And it's your choice, really.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, is there anybody else gonna speak to this? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, number forty-six. Dr. Alan French, Trees on the Coast, beautification of Scenic Highway thirty-eight, requests approval to donate trees to the county and plant the trees in the county right away.
Alan French, thank y'all for letting me speak tonight, and thank my board members who are here to support us. Let's, this is gonna be fun and all positive. So if you can back up, I just, I have one, really two requests tonight. One is to allow us to give trees to the county and to the citizens of Walton County. And the other is to allow citizens to plant honor trees. And I'll go through that here in just a minute. So if you can go on. Trees on the Coast is a nonprofit. I will say, just off this one slide, we've been very successful. But in Atlanta, Georgia, in the early eighties, it was all concrete. A little Trees Atlanta came along and said, why don't I put street trees in? And a hundred and eighty thousand trees later, they've done it. And so it can be done. No matter what you hear negatively, it can be done. Next, please. This is our dream. If you look on the left, you see dirt, sand, weeds, and a bike path that's a hundred and twenty degrees in the middle of summer. And on the right, that's our dream. We'd like to do that all along thirty-eight. Next, please. There's precedence for this. There's a recent project east of Rosemary going out to ninety-eight on both sides of thirty-eight where oaks were planted. I didn't even put the precedent at Great and Beach where the new, nice brick parking spaces are. If you keep going, please. Our first project is west of two eighty-three on the south side, thirty-five sand live oaks. Next, please. The, these are going west from two eighty-three until the swell narrows down. Next, please. Western Lakes are another project. If you look at these trees, the way the sun shines, they will shade this bike path for walkers and bikers for years to come. That's fifty-two trees, I believe, beginning at watercolor and going all the way to that, where that picture is. Next, please. And next. What are the benefits? There, all of these are gonna be donated by us. There's absolutely no cost to the county, no cost to the taxpayers. And there's so many more benefits. This is a benefit-risk decision that you're gonna have. Eco-tourism, encouraging locals to get off thirty-eight. We talk about traffic. They'll, they'll want to walk and bike more if they have a shaded bike path. Thirty-eight is gonna become over-the-top beautiful. You know what Rosemary Beach looks like. And if we can do that for twenty miles and not cost anybody anything, I think it's just, to me, it's a no-brainer from, from my perspective. So I hope you all agree with that. Increased property values, and I think that translates to increased property taxes. Is that a good thing for the commission? I'm not sure. But we can keep going, please. This honor tree program, we've done this before in other communities. And what it is, is a donor donates a tree or trees, and they get a little plaque by their tree that, I'll show you these in just a second. And it's been a super-successful program for us. If you'll go to the next one, please. This is an actual project where all trees shown here are donated, and the plaques are in place. So it's nothing obtrusive that you'd see from thirty-eight. And we had over a hundred, next, please, over a hundred donors came forward. Someone were donating five hundred, some were donating three thousand, some were donating six thousand dollars. So these are the little plaques. People will be more likely to donate a tree than they would ever be if I just say, hey, give some money to Trees on the Coast, because they like the idea of honoring somebody. And that's what this program is about. So that's my second request, is if you allow these trees to be planted in the right way, can we also do the honor plaque, our honor sign program? And we picked the sand live oak. That's not in stone. It's, why is it the perfect tree for thirty-eight? Next, please. It's native. It's very tolerant to salt, wind, poor soil conditions. It's an evergreen, so it stays beautiful year-round. The, one of the key things the sand live oak has is a shallow root system. The roots, I've researched all this, the roots want to stay in the oxygen zone, so they stay in eighteen inches or above. And most of our utilities are buried below that. Next, please. Next, please. We're going to work closely with the powers-to-be. In other words, we want to do this right. We don't want to just go out there willy-nilly.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Take about thirty seconds.
Okay. When you hear the pushback to what we're trying to do, I would just say, y'all are the leaders. And if you think this is a great idea to really beautify our community and let the community come together and get involved, then y'all can say, let's make this happen. And it will happen. So I'll leave it at that. I know my time's up. So thank you all for letting me present this. And we are working with landscape architects to do it right. Any questions?
Well, I won't...
Can you go to the next slide?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. Our right-of-way is limited there. We've got bike path, we've got a road. We've got all kinds of utilities that are underground and overhead. And...
Are you talking about Western Lake or Greaton Beach?
I'm not sure where it's at, but they were talking about different locations along thirty-eight. And our utility companies and gas companies, being one of them, are concerned about whatever tree is planted, the impact it would have on its buried lines. And then we get one from the power company that is advising that if it's within a certain range of their line, that it starts growing, they're going to have to cut it. And there's an issue there. So it's a good project, I'm okay with that. But I want to make sure that whatever goes forward is not going to have a significant impact with any of the utilities there. And it's just one of those things we've got to take into mind, is how much this could have on that, okay?
This is on the south side of thirty-eight at Greaton. There's no overhead utilities, there's no water utilities, it's pretty much dirt.
In those cases where there isn't any utilities and all that, and I think when me and you discussed it at my office, one of the concerns I brought up was whether or not the close proximity of these trees where they're planted, what kind of impact is it going to have on the asphalt of all the road and also of the bike path?
If you, I took that to heart. I went and looked for some areas in medians where live oaks were planted. This is a twenty-inch caliper. It's five feet from that curb, and there's absolutely no signs of damage.
They may be able to, it can all work out, but I just wanted to let you know my concerns.
Okay, I understand your concerns. And I'm trying to address them all because I'm so passionate about giving this to the, giving back to the community, that I just, I really want this to happen, y'all.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have to, Chairman, I'm not opposed to it either. I think it's a worthwhile project. But I do think we need to look long-term in the future. Maybe the utility lines there now, they may need to be placed there if you go in and put it there. We planted a tree once at the Killon, for example, and they had a chain around it. The tire, the tree grew around the chain. So trees grow and the root systems grow. So I'm not negating this. I just think we need to do a lot of looking into the future before we make this down the system.
I think it's a very worthwhile project, and I appreciate you coming to my office and explaining it. I think we need to work closely with the utility companies. From talking to our planning director, there's a new green book coming out by the state of Florida that might help you in this, as I've talked to you about.
Right.
And it's coming out in the next couple of months, Mike. And Mike was the one informing me of that when I was talking to him about it. So, you know, stay in touch with me and the rest of the commissioners, and let's try to make this work. I think it's a worthwhile project.
Just, I'm not sure exactly how it works, but what, do I just need to keep coming back to the commission to get permission? Or when do y'all vote on, do you have to vote on it? I don't know.
Yes, we have. We have to vote on it.
I would suggest you work, you start, you know, get with the utilities company. And I would think, according to Mike, that your best bet is to wait till this new green book. Is that what you think, Mike? Because I had a long talk with him about it, and he's for it too. But he said, the state guidelines are going to change. And it's going to change in your favor, is what we think, for doing projects like this.
Okay. There are, I have not talked to one citizen in this county that doesn't like this idea. Hundreds, and people are chomping at the bit to donate trees in honor of their loved ones, so...
Well, you're right.
I haven't talked and getting the cart before the horse, but I just want people to know what we're trying to do.
You know, Rosemary is completely different from the rest of thirty-eight. It's beautiful with those oaks down there, and I love them. One of my fondest memories was when I used to go to my grandmother's house in Valdosta, Georgia, going up the Thomasville Highway, and it was just caves of trees over the road, you know? So I'm in favor of the project if we can work out the details.
So I worked those out with engineering or Mac or...
I worked with Mac.
I worked with Mac and with the utility companies.
Okay. I just, I know that project was approved, you know, coming out of Rosemary up to ninety-eight. And I just thought this was going to be a very easy approval process, so...
You might want to check with the utility companies and see what area that you could start with and pinpoint a project instead of having, you know, broad scope. Try to pick a project that you would like to start with and see if, you know, they might could tell you where the best place to be. I think we have some over, don't we have some over-ground utilities in Seaside now? So, you know, whatever. But then I was going to ask you too, when you came to my office, you talked about that little pie, that little triangle at Eastern Lake. Is that still something you're looking at?
We actually got that permitted without, they didn't want us to put any trees in. And then the friends of Scenic thirty-eight, thirty-eight, who by the way, totally support what we're trying to do here, they are going to do a project there, so we kind of backed off.
Okay, thank you, Fer.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay, hang on. Ryan, you're up, and then Lee, you'll be behind him. Yeah, Mac.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, Ryan Douglas, Regional Utilities, Vice President. I appreciate everything Mr. French just brought in front of you guys. I just wanted to make sure I came and represented some of our concerns. He alluded to some of those. We did first hear about this project when it was going in front of the TDC, in front of Mr. Tucson. We reached out, Melissa Pilcher, our general manager, sent him a letter expressing just some concerns about conflicts between trees, roots, utilities, and that type of thing. I wanted to highlight a couple of those. You may have already seen that letter. Certainly, he alluded to a few of the issues. You know, we provide water and sewer along about ninety-nine point nine percent of thirty-eight. So, I mean, there's only a small portion of the far east end past Rosemary that we don't. First of all, just the physical, trees being there do prohibit access to our facilities. Every right-of-way has at least one or multiple, and in the growing nature that thirty-eight has been of sewer and water lines, as it's grown over the years, it's constrained. And I'm just talking about water and sewer. We have, East is not here for Oakley's gas, but you see their letter up there. They have a high-pressure gas main on the south, in the south right-of-way at the location. He just mentioned that it didn't have a water line, but it also has a sewer line in that location. So there's certainly some potential conflicts there. Not to be a complete naysayer, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Our system is aging. And in the future, we'll be needing to upgrade that, just as you do, as you overlay a road. We'll be upgrading some of those lines and having to replace those lines. The current right-of-way policy that is approved by the board and is upheld, if you will, by Public Works specifically allows utilities to impact things within the right-of-way, structures, plantings, and things of that nature. And it specifically says we don't have to repair or replace those. Now, we don't, that's not specifically talking about grass. We would, we take care of those things. But I'm just talking about those improvements above ground. So things to keep in mind, if and when we come through, and we will be having to upgrade our water line from end to end of thirty-eight over the next ten years. So that's going to impact some of these areas, sewer line upgrades. I just wanted to put some issues out there in front of you. Tree roots are thirsty. They grow to where the water's at. Well, water's in, obviously, water lines, but sewer lines more specifically. Talking about those gravity sewer lines. And once a root enters a gravity sewer line, I'm sure possibly you've dealt with it yourself at your homes, when those roots, they just explode. They just grow and grow and grow. So they're going to find nutrients, and they're going to seek those places out. I had a ton of pictures that I didn't bring, and I can send you some. But just some concerns that Regional has about lines being planted over and near around our water and sewer lines, just in general, and such a constraint right-of-way of thirty-eight.
Thank you, Ryan. Lee?
Thank you, Commissioners. Lee Moore, I'm representing the Scenic Corridor Foundation. We are in full support of this project. And I would just encourage you, this could take multiple, multiple, multiple projects along thirty-eight. So it would be great if at some point there could be some kind of a blanket approval that would assume or be conditioned upon utilities, whatever else, being taken into consideration and worked with and satisfied in each individual project. And I would also just say that it's really easy to say no and to say it won't work. I would encourage the utility companies and anyone else to really work with the community. I agree with Alan, there's a tremendous amount of community support for this. We've got trees and rights aways all over this world, and people have found ways to make it work. So I would just encourage that. And I think political will from the elected officials will go a long way toward encouraging that cooperation. Thank you very much. It's a great project.
Matthew? Mr. Tricker, you're behind him.
Hey, good evening. Matthew Avery, Vice President of Engineering with Chelco. First of all, I commend Dr. French for the project. Myself and my family, we ride our bikes on thirty-eight. And every time we enter the western pass there, it's hot. So I certainly understand it. At the same time, you know, Chelco's mission is to provide reliable and affordable, you know, power to the people here in this area. There's about six thousand meters, homes and businesses, that these particular projects would impact if trees are in the right-of-way. One of the things I just want to make the commission aware of, you know, when Chelco builds a new power line, we look for a thirty-foot cleared path from ground to sky. That is, so we can maintain reliability, you know, to those areas. Obviously, and you see it particularly in Greaton Beach and other areas, we do not have a thirty-foot right-of-way. And it is becoming harder and harder to cut those trees and that vegetation in certain areas of our county. We do our best, but we also try to work with the people that live there that really love those trees. At the same time, when the hurricane comes through or any other storm, there's a lot of criticism because why ain't my power back up, you know, the next day? Well, most of that reason is because those trees are in the power line. So I would just ask that as you're considering the options, and we will certainly work with the group to find a solution. We are not opposed to trees. We just want to make sure that we can provide our product to the people and the member owners of Chelco, so they can have that reliable service that they deserve. And part of that will be cutting trees that enter a thirty-foot, fifteen-foot on either side of the pole line. And so if everybody enters this, you know, with the understanding that that is, that will happen eventually, that no matter, as the tree gets taller, we will need to cut those trees. If they don't encroach into that fifteen-foot, you know, that's great. But please consider that as we're kind of moving down the path to work with Dr. French. So any questions?
Any questions? I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
I first want to say that my daughter works for Chelco, so I'll put that out on the table. But I can do, I mean, what I hate is when my power goes off, I want to know how soon it's going to come back on. You know, so I really, I say I'm not opposed to the project. I just think we need to really take a look at the impact, not only now, but ten, fifteen years from now, on what, because trees grow.
Mr. Tricker?
Thank you. Fred Tricker, T R I C K E R. And I just wanted to say on behalf of South Walton Community Council that we fully support this project. Looks like a really good project. This is a premium tourist destination. And I think trees along thirty-eight would help a lot, really, as far as appearances is concerned, the environment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. It's a request from Jason Sprinkle, the Sonder Project, to approve a thirty-eight half marathon and a five K and close both lanes of thirty-eight from Spire's Lane to Gulf Place to Buttercup and Watercolor from six-thirty a.m. to ten a.m. on Sunday, upcoming the fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley Horstley.
Ashley, so you don't look like Jason.
I'm not Jason Sprinkle. I'm Ashley Horstley. I'm co-founder of the Sonder Project. And this is the third year that we will be putting on the thirty-eight half marathon and five K, which benefits the Sonder Project. We have put together a traffic impact mitigation and communication plan. Because it is our third year, we have certainly learned our lesson on what works and what doesn't in terms of traffic and communication. So we are requesting road closure of thirty-eight like we have the last two years, but this time with a little bit more preparedness. Some of the things that we've done in addition to the last two years, increased the number of officers that we have on the course from sixteen to nineteen. We've also, those additional officers are going to be stationed at Adagio, the retreat, in Gulf Place, the course starting at Gulf Place, turnaround point at the Watercolor Boathouse, and then turning back. And then we are also adding additional road signs. We found that communication is a key piece that we need to really focus on. So we are adding additional road signs that are going to be put out a week in advance. These are the message boards. We are increasing that from two to four from last year. And in addition, we are going to, at the request of the sheriff's office, going to be replacing cones at the intersections with larger barricades, type-three style barricades. On the communications plan, we have intentions of using the reverse nine-one-one and alert Walton systems going out one day and three days prior to the race. In addition, we're going to be doing some proactive communication efforts, including reaching out to all residents that are within the path of the course or live along that path, getting them postcards, which I also have to hand out. Once approved, sending out postcards to the residents that live along that path, letting them know that the road again will be closed between the hours of six-thirty and nine-thirty. Parts of the course will then be pushed over to the sidewalk, the race ending at ten a.m. in the morning. In addition, we will be taking to the streets and going by all of the retail locations that are in the path of the race and making sure that they are aware of the race and the road closures. And then lastly, reaching out to all of the churches that do meet on Sundays that meet along that course so that we can make sure that the churches are aware that the road will be closed during that time as well.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Well, I'm going to be a naysayer once again. We're getting more and more and more requests to close thirty-eight. I mean, how many in the last month have we got? At some point, you know, are we going to become marathon central? Or, I mean, people live along there. They do have to get up and go to work and go to church. And this is what, three and a half hours, that road's going to be closed? I'm not particularly negating this one, but I mean, we've got to come to some kind of understanding of, are we going to have a marathon every weekend? Three and a half hours is a long time to close the road. And she says that it ends at ten o'clock. Well, personally, if I was running it, I'd be there at twelve. So, I mean, you can't, you can't say it's going to end at exactly ten o'clock. You've got to let all the runners and get married, they're all like quite fast, and be there before ten o'clock. But, you know, I don't know about this one, but I'm going to plead again that we do something to stop. I mean, we've got nice sandy beaches down there. What about talking to DOG about closing a lane on ninety-eight? I mean, why does it have to be thirty-eight every time? Those are my concerns that I had expressed with the board. You're just more and more closing thirty-eight, and we do have less of, we've got to take into consideration.
Okay. You may have said, yeah, let me ask this real quick. What is the Sonder Project? What is, who's it benefit, or what does it do?
Sure. The Sonder Project is a nonprofit. We were started locally. We work both locally and internationally. Most of our efforts are international. We have huge agriculture projects. So we work primarily in Burkina Fava. projects, so we work primarily in Burkina Faso, West Africa. Really, the focus is how to take the dollar and maximize the effort using high-impact philanthropy. So we go into these villages. I happen to be very passionate about the effort and the location, so we go into these, into these communities in West Africa where there's a need for access to clean water and access to food. And we clear plots of land, and we do what's equivalent to about 11 acres of agriculture plots, providing them with access to clean water, drilling wells, and irrigation for the agriculture plots. And then in turn, we do that really in locations where we have also gone previously and built schools with a partnership through another organization. And so what we do with that, with that food, is we feed the school with a portion of it. We provide, we provide food for them to take back to markets, to then resell so that they can provide sustainability and income back to the communities. And then also a portion of that food goes back to the community to feed themselves as well.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, you want something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know you said you notified the churches, but what suppose their church starts at 9:30, is there a way they can get out to get to church?
So there were really, there are just a number of the communities where there's actually, they're actually locked in. Several of the churches that are along the route, one of which I think meets at Gulf Place, they have said in the past, you know, if we have the notification that's necessary, we can accommodate this. But what we failed at previously and what we're trying to do this time is make sure that we're a lot more proactive in that communication so they can talk to their congregation and shift their schedules if that's necessary.
Okay. Anyone else?
How long have you been having this?
This is our third year. This would be our third year.
Anything else? Okay. I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
What's the board's wishes?
Well, I'd like to go ahead and approve it this year, but I really, I'm like Commissioner Commander, I really would like for y'all to start looking for alternative locations to have these, and I don't know where it would be, but...
And I will second that motion. I didn't mean to interrupt, but the ones on Sunday, we seem to get the worst complaints on.
Okay.
And some of us were in Washington last year when it probably wasn't your race, but it was a race that was being held on Sunday. And I mean, my phone was blowing up from people not being out, able to get out and go to church. So it might be a better time to do it, I mean, not this year. I know you can't change what you've started, but I'm all for these things. I really am. I know y'all have to raise money. I, listen, I've played in a 5,000 golf tournaments to raise money for charities and will until my back says I can't play anymore. But what I would like to do is direct staff to get a list of all the races we've had with dates and the road closures, and let's look at this in an overall plan. As Commissioners Commander said, there's going to come a time when we just have to say, we can't do it anymore. And I'm afraid that time's not too far off. And, you know, it's not that we want to, but, you know, it's getting to be where we have way, you know, we're getting them all the time, and I'm not, certainly not criticizing y'all because I believe in what y'all are doing. I think it's a very well-worth project, and I know y'all have to have funding. But as I was playing in these golf tournaments, there got to be so many that the members weren't getting to play golf. So we have, we have to figure out a way to get people out of these areas, and I don't know what the answer is. So let's, let's see what we can do. And like I said, I second the motion to let's go ahead and approve this. But we, staff need, we need to start working on planning, okay? And like I say, I wholeheartedly support y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion second. Stan, you had a comment?
Yeah, Commissioners, if you would like for me to, we can work with the Sheriff's Office. If you recall, last weekend, we had a road closure, and we had a lot of concerns about people being able to get out and get to the customary use hearing. And we worked with Sheriff's Office, and obviously, there would still be some inconveniences, but the Sheriff's Office was able to work with people to allow them to egress out of 30A, just not ingress to 30A. So we can certainly work with them and see if that's, if they can accommodate that in this instance.
And my comment is in line with Commissioner Anderson, that we need to direct staff to go ahead and start analyzing all these applications that we get concerning these road closures and what have you. And there may be a point in time that we have to decide there's only one quarter or set it upwards. But let's wait until we get all the data in and have the opportunity to review it. Okay.
It's okay if I direct all my calls to you on Sunday?
Absolutely.
By the way, a great presentation, too.
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Is any public comment?
I just, I just have one comment, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, I just would like to say that the TDC is obviously partners with a lot of these events, and so we'd like to volunteer our resources with County ABN in helping resolve these issues and coming to a solution. So anything we can do to help, we'd be more than happy to.
Well, I think the direction then is for our staff up here in TDC to get together and see if we can work this out.
Absolutely.
All right, so no public comment. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Yeah, one aye, four one.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Derek?
Aye, sir.
Baru?
Close, very close.
Was that close?
That is very close. I'll take it.
All right. Go ahead, Derek. It's a request to officially change the name of a portion of Seacrest back to its original name, Seacrest Beach.
Yes, sir. Good evening. It's Ber, B-E-R. Whoa, you already have it written down, sorry. I'm here on behalf of my, one of our neighbors, Susan Rasey, who started this process with the United States Geological Survey Board of, oh, I went ahead and, geographic names. What we're just asking is to have the, our neighborhood, Seacrest Beach, added as a recognized popular or populated place. In order for the USGS BGN to do that, we need to get a form from the county commissioners saying that that is acceptable. We're not asking to change anything the county does or anything the TDC does. This is just a, an effort that we feel is important from a public safety perspective because as a populated place, it would be eligible to show up on maps, GPS. It would also be something that if we wanted, if the postal service would be amicable to adding this as an alternate location for our zip code 32461. In order to have any of that kind of stuff happen, the BGN needs to identify this or accept this as a, as a populated place. The public safety concern really kind of arises out of an incident that happened back in November of last year where a bicycle was riding down Seacrest Beach Boulevard West in our neighborhood. They hit a bump, the person fell, was knocked unconscious, and waited approximately 25 minutes for an ambulance to show up. The ambulance was actually over down on Seacrest Drive on the other side of Alice Beach. So all we're asking for is, I guess, the board of the Commissioners to allow us to approve this request to have Seacrest Beach, which would be the area from west of Rosemary Beach and east of Alice Beach. Just have it so we can get it as a populated place.
And I understand that it really doesn't make any difference to the county. It's just something the feds ask you to get from us, so I...
Yes, sir.
Assume we have no objection to it. It's up to the... You what?
Somebody just called.
Louis?
I mean, I had something about it. I've been working, if you'd like to, I have another question from a...
We are, thank you.
Hi. For the record, Louis Savela, Public Information, S-V-E-H-L-A. We were contacted by this group about a year and a half ago to get an official name change submission for the US Geological Names Department in Washington. What the, what the, that group actually is requesting from the board is not that you approve it. There's a one sheet that says, "We approve it, we don't approve of it, or we make no finding of that." So it's approve the name, reject the name, or render a decision without our recommendation. So those are really your options. They're just trying to get this form from you one way or the other.
Does it make any difference what we may vote on, one of them three? Is that going to hamstring what they're trying to do?
I, I don't know. The contact I've had is just, we need something from the county before we can even move it forward. That's all the Geological Society has said to us.
Hi, Commissioner Anderson.
I make a motion. We approve this.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries.
Derek, don't count on the zip code change.
Oh, no, no.
As a 30-year employee of the postal service.
Not worried about that. Who do I need to see about this?
Okay, next up is public comment. This is the time you can speak about any and everything you want to talk about. Is there any?
For three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then the next item is our legislative and development services. The board need to take a break before we get into this.
This shouldn't take you long, right?
I have no idea.
Matt, should this take you long?
We're going to be...
Yes, or no question?
No, it won't take too long.
Thank you.
All right, there was just press. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item we have is a request to transmit substantially revised future land use elements to the appropriate state and federal agencies for review. You may recall that we have previously transmitted this particular element to the state and received no comment letters from the state and no objections. However, we have made some substantive improvements as we've moved through our comprehensive plan project. There are a number of large tracts that have previously had development land uses associated with them, and in particular, some of the MC Davis and Acusid Plantation properties, they have requested to change from a development kind of land use to a conservation land use as they place these properties into conservation easements. They've also acquired some additional development land adjacent to their existing holdings with their intent to place those into conservation easements ultimately also. And at their request, we have made those downzoning kinds of changes to the map. It involves several hundred acres, and because of those substantive changes, we're going to request that we be allowed to retransmit to the state so that they can review these substantive changes.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving to our, our second item. We have a request to adopt by ordinance proposed provisions to Chapter 1, Chapter 3 of the Land Development Code and to strike Chapters 8, 9, 10, and 11 because those chapters have been integrated into Chapters 1 and, so those would be complete strike-throughs. This would be the second reading as advertised of this particular amendment. However, we continue to engage our public, and we'd like to take a little bit longer to work with this particular chapter 2. It is where we implement zoning, and we request that we reschedule the adoption hearing for October 9.
That's from Chapter 2.
That would be on Chapter 2. Chapter 1 and 3, we would like to ask for your approval tonight.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve, second.
Now, if I could just make one comment that was requested earlier, contained in Chapter 1 is where the thresholds for major and minor development appear. And we're proposing to keep the residential density thresholds of 20 single-family lots and 30 multifamily dwellings the same as in the current code. Upon the recommendation of Matrix in our review of the process, we're proposing that the 5,000 square foot non-residential threshold be increased to 20,000 square feet. Now, we've done a number of things to try to improve transparency for our public, to let folks know what's coming in their neighborhood as soon as possible. We've reformatted the way our TRC meetings are being conducted now, and that's significantly improved that process. We're using the displays during that meeting. And we would also propose that we move into using the Granicus system like we do for Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners to post our technical review committee agenda and those project details. Generally, our public has gotten very familiar with Granicus. They understand how to use that. And if we could use that system for the technical review committee meetings, that means that we're going to have to get our work done at least a week before that meeting, which is going to take some additional effort on our part in the Planning Department. But we think that that would provide the public with a, an improved ability to know what's coming up at the technical review committee meetings and have the opportunity to participate.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we had a motion and a second.
Did you have one, please?
I thought that the 5,000, 20,000 was in Chapter 2.
No, ma'am, that is in Chapter 1 where all of our processes are moved to. They were originally in Chapter 10 and Chapter 11, but those two chapters have been moved to Chapter 1. Chapter 2 is where the land use categories are, which will include the details of neighborhood infill. In Chapter 1, or previously in Chapter 10, neighborhood infill required a major development process, whether you were developing two units or 200 units, which was a significant burden for that, for those that wanted to develop in that particular category. We're revising that category to make it much more predictable, and this will occur in, in Chapter 2, in the zoning section. But with regard to process, we're proposing that those neighborhood infill projects no longer be major developments and may be sized based on what the applicant is actually proposing, like our other categories are.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment? All right, Fred?
Thank you. Fred Tricker, T-R-I-C-K-E-R, representing SWCC. We've had discussions with planning over this change, and in general, there's a problem with minor development orders because the TRC Technical Review Committee is the first and the last step in the approval process. Neighborhood infill, it seems to us, is different than other development in that you're plunking something by definition down into the middle of a neighborhood, and there's a lot of different reasons why a lot of different people might want to have something to say about it. And a one-step process doesn't give them adequate review. And I appreciate that there's a terrific burden on developers to put together a package for a major development order, but rather than have the technical review committee as the, as the last review, it seems to me it would be more appropriate to look at ways to reduce the burden on people that are coming in with a 20-unit proposal and maybe reduce some of the expense. I understand that. But the public, I think, does need to have an opportunity to review it and comment on it. TRC does not do that, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, in regards to his question about TRC, there's opportunity for the public to...
Yes, sir. When that is going to be final agency action, we actually open a public hearing to allow anyone to speak on that particular application on any aspect of that, including, I just don't like it in my neighborhood. Now, Mr. Tricker mentioned a 20-unit development. A 20-single-family lot development would still be a major development even in infill. A 19-lot subdivision would not be as we have proposed. But today, a two-lot subdivision is a major development in neighborhood infill. We have a particular applicant that proposed, is proposing a 10-lot subdivision in neighborhood infill, and I think we have written public comment on that from that particular individual. And to develop a 10-lot subdivision in neighborhood infill, given the cost to go all the way through the major development process, it could potentially make those units not affordable. So one of the things, one of the efforts that we're hoping to achieve by this is to reduce the cost of the process, which also translates into the cost of what is being developed for the end user. If the process is smaller, then the cost is smaller, and ideally, the housing is more affordable. Now, I'm not talking about beachfront, single-family... Now, I'm not talking about beachfront, uh, single-family, uh, short-term rentals. We're talking about where people live. Um, but it's an effort to try to reduce the cost of government, uh, while still at the same time, making sure that the public has adequate opportunity to review whatever's coming in their neighborhood. Uh, and we're very interested in the public knowing exactly what's going on and exactly where the process is and to have the opportunity to participate in the process. Um, so, we're gonna continue to work towards that, uh, that goal in any regard.
Okay. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Camilo Giraldo, G I R A L D O. I'm gonna start, uh, by quoting the gentleman from the South Walton, um, Council. He said, "Flunking some, something into a neighborhood," as he was referring to infill. I'm gonna give you an example of flunking something into a neighborhood. The old town of Santa Rosa, as he was writing, one of the very first towns in the area, um, it was developed in the forties, fifties, and then you come years later, you put infill development into a property like it had taken, put in restrictions on something that was already master-planned years ago. I'm the gentleman that has the property. Um, if I was to develop it, per the old town of Santa Rosa, I actually have the ability to, to what I consider do over fifteen homes, um, because you, there's are lots of records. Not the county, nor the state, or the Army Corps of Engineer can stop me if I want to, um, um, encumber on wetlands. And, and my, my reasoning, what I try to do, what I'm trying to do is actually reshape my property to be able to avoid the wetlands because these are actually beautiful water, body of water that has marshlands, and I, and so, so this comes to avoiding that and reshaping the property to make it ten homes. But because I'm infill development, I have to do a major development order for my ten little homes, and it's just not practical. I mean, it's putting a burden on, on our county staff, it's putting, putting a burden on myself, the, the builder, you can just quote developer, I don't know if that's even applicable term for ten little homes. And ultimately, the, the end user are gonna be single-family residential homes for the people that work and live in our county. This is not your investor that is coming from out of town to buy two-point-five-million-dollar home in Alice Beach. So, I, I think the, the county has spent a lot of time through, through, through redoing the, this land development code, uh, for the benefit of the county. I don't think they will be sitting here making a recommendation on something that will hinder the, um, the community. So, I, I am full support of it, and, uh, I'm a prime example of, of how this, this change could benefit me, and, and this is a true hardship. So, thank you for your time, and I know you're gonna, I'll make the best decisions for the citizens of Walton County.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Just to clarify, the motion was to approve Chapters One and Three and continue Chapter Two to the October ninth meeting, right?
Throw Chapter Two in it. All right, who made the motion additionally?
I did.
You did? You okay with that?
No, I'm not. I, I made a mistake, so I retract my motion.
Yeah, you can. You gonna withdraw it?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm withdrawing because I, I made a mistake with the, the chapters.
All right, whoever made the second. Are you gonna withdraw them? I think so.
Okay, I'm withdrawing.
All right, then. The motion that you're asking to be brought forward is that we go ahead and approve Chapters One and Three and postpone Chapter Two until October the ninth, I believe.
And I'll, and I'll make that motion.
And I'll, I'll second.
Yeah, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Nay. All right. Does that take care of all yours, Matt?
Uh, we got one more, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have one small-scale amendment.
Yeah, I see it. Bannerman's?
Yes, sir. Um, this is the Bannerman Small-Scale Amendment Project. Uh, they're requesting to change the adopted future land use of approximately two-point-eight-three acres, uh, from residential preservation to conservation residential, uh, two units per acre. Uh, they're proposing a five-lot, single-family subdivision, um, on the south side of thirty A. The applicant is here and prepared to, um, make their case.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm Scott James. I'm from James Engineering, and I would like to say, I don't make the agenda, so these guys are shaking their head. I know I'm last. So, but, uh, we're here representing the applicant, I think, as Mac explained. This is the two-point-eight-three-acre parcel that's, um, sorry. Now, it's, well, the south side of thirty A, um, this is the piece of property, this is the Bannerman subdivision in this location. Um, and just to point out a few things to you guys as we, as we go through this, the request is a small-scale amendment, is the current future land use is RPA, which is, uh, residential preservation, which would allow one unit on this two-point-eight-three acres. Um, the request tonight is to change this to conservation residential of two units per acre, which would allow this to be split up into five lots. Those five lots would all have to be a minimum of one-half acre, just so that you understand that. Um, when the old Bannerman covenants restrictions are, were written up, that was actually the kind of, uh, determining factor for the lots, where they had to be one-half acre in those in the original documents out here. Um, the, uh, the request, this request was actually, uh, made in two thousand and fifteen before this board to change this piece of property to low-density residential. That request was denied because I think at the time, they were concerned that that would have allowed up to eleven units on this piece of property, and they were concerned about that number of units. This, uh, again, would, would basically change the land use to conservation residential, and so that, so you can see what's around you in this location. This is the property. Over on this side, this is a higher density, this is a condominium on this side that has about a hundred and three units. This is great, the preserve, the preserve of Grayton up in this area, which is relatively high-density residential development. This is the Bannerman subdivision, where the majority of the lots here are half an acre, roughly. This is Redfish Lane, where also the lots over in this area are about a half an acre. Um, the proposal, if you can see this, if you can turn it right away, would actually be to split this into five individual lots with an access all from Bannerman, Beach Lane, and this location. Um, every one of these lots, as we said before, would be a little more than half an acre, they're about two-point-five six acres on average. Um, one of the important things to point out about the CR two-to-one is that it does require sixty percent preservation of open space on the lots, so that's actually more than what would be required currently, so it's actually a more restrictive land use, um, as far as open space, leaving the native vegetation in those locations in place and things like that. Um, the, uh, the, the, uh, the process for this, if this were to get approved tonight, they would still have to go through a development order process for any approvals for this, and they would go through any, all the technical reviews. This is strictly the land use change request tonight for this, that would determine what would be allowed, um, in this location, and really, that's, that's basically it, but really, no variance is being requested, the traffic and everything checked out. When we turn in the traffic analysis, there's pretty small impact on this area, and we can't answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to add, this did go before the Planning Commission last month, and it was approved unanimously at the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you. Any public comment?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. Is that it, Matt?
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody will be adjourned.
You get to take the comment.
No, no.